We'll start our meeting as usual with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. I'm pleased to say that we now have a full board of the State Board of Education with the gubernatorial appointment of a day or two ago of Mark Karen. And I want to thank the governor's office for their timely fulfillment of all the various vacancies that we've had in the last few months. I think it might be helpful for everyone if we went around the table once again and introduced ourselves with a little brief information. Certainly, Mark will have a better idea of who he's sitting with. So with that, Bill, would you start?
Okay, I'm Bill Mathis. I live in the metropolis of Goshen. We have 223 people there, 17 kids, and 84 registered dogs. So you know what political power is in Goshen.
Maybe a little more detail than we need, Bill.
I'm the managing director of the National Education Policy Center. And as such, we do research on educational policy issues, and a lot of which are, we talk about here. Also was superintendent of schools for Rutland Northeast for 25 years. And I believe I hold the current existing record for most school board meetings attended in the state. It's something over 3,000. And so I enjoy the work, and what else can I say?
Krista.
Okay, Krista Huling. I'm a teacher at South Burlington High School. And let's see, I live in Jeffersonville. And so there, I really stayed in touch with Vermont, where I used to work, and just the issues in that region of Vermont.
Hi, I'm Margaret McLean. I live in Peacham, Vermont. And I've been a teacher and principal in Vermont for a long period of time. But most currently, I work for the Rural School and Community Trust. It's a national advocacy organization for rural schools. I work for them part-time, and I also have work internationally consulting.
I'm Laura Harris. I'm from Williston. I'm a senior at Champlain Valley Union High School. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, come on. You know where you're going next year.
I'm going to Middlebury College this year.
Congratulations.
I'm Sean Marie Oler, and I have many, over 20 years of school board experience down in the Bennington area. Before moving to Vermont, I was an early childhood educator. And currently, I work at Sunrise, which is a parent-child center in southern Vermont.
And I'm Stephen Morse, Chair of the Board. My only educational experience was I taught school for one year right out of college at Peacham Academy. Luckily, the academy closed after that year, so I'm not, I probably would have taught for the rest of my career.
Was there a connection?
There was not. At least that I know of. But I, I'm retired. I worked at the Wyndham Foundation for 25 years and serve on several other boards and state commissions and am pleased to be part of this process.
Armando Villasegna, the Secretary of Education.
Well, hello all. I'm Mark Perrin. I'm from Middlebury. And I grew up, I grew up just outside of Peacham in the summer times, at Harvey's Lake. Spent a lot of time, still head there. So I'm glad to see there's a Peacham connection going on. I've been in Middlebury since 1990 on a family farm where we raise sheep. And I've been in the restaurant business since 1982, where we bought our first restaurant in Middlebury and then kind of were spread out throughout the state in St. Johnsberry, Berry, Montpelier, and Middlebury. And my wife and I have had two kids, and they've gone through the school system. I've been involved with the school board since about 1996. I've served on our elementary board, our high school board, Career Center board. I've been involved with the Workforce Investment Board. And my passion is learning. And I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to be part of this process because lifelong learning starts when kids are very young. And as long as we don't screw it up as adults, we want to make sure that they continue on and really looking forward to working with you. And thank you for those of you who have been around and leading the charge. Thank you.
My name's Laughlin Francis. I'm from Putney. I attend Brattleboro Union High School.
I'm Stacy Weinberger. I'm from Burlington. I've spent 17 years as an early childhood teacher, a program and staff developer, and a school administrator. And my daughter attends the Integrated Arts Academy, which is one of Vermont's two magnet schools in Burlington.
Thank you. I want to remind folks in the audience that there's a sign-up sheet over in the table. So if you haven't signed in, please, please sign in. Are there announcements or thoughts from board members?
One quick thing is I will be on a NASB conference call talking about the President's budget. They apparently have some presentation on that. I don't know exactly what it is. If there's anything of interest, I will get it to you folks.
When is that call?
This is Friday.
Other comments or announcements? And that will take us into the work session on the EQS Commission. I've asked Jill to, because there's so many new board members and so many of us that may be forgotten this process, to start by explaining where we are, how this process began, and what the proposed schedule is and the process. So Jill, would you start by having everyone introduce themselves, please?
My name is Jill Remick. I'm a project manager at the Agency of Education. And I'm here with some other folks to talk to about the State Board Rule 2100, which is currently called School Quality Standards, and the work that's been going on to revise those standards into education quality standards. So perhaps I'll start, I'll just, we'll go down if you want to just introduce yourself and where you're from.
Sure, I'm Annie Howell. I also live in Burlington, very near Stacy. And I am the Chief Academic Officer at the Vermont State Colleges.
I'm Kathy Larson, a proud member of this commission, appointed by the State Board. And I'm also a new member of the Wilmington School Board.
Maybe one thing I'll quickly explain to new members is that Kathy was appointed to, from the State Board of Education, to serve on the EQS Commission. And it was my judgment or our judgment that, in that this process was coming to a close, that it probably made sense for Kathy to remain on that as opposed to one of us trying to come up to speed. So that's, Kathy is technically still there representing the board, but she's an independent thinker, and I'm sure she's giving her best thoughts to the commission. Excuse me, sir.
I'm Harry Frank. I work as the Associate Director at the School Boards Association.
So I'm thrilled to have these folks here with me today to talk to you a little bit more about the work we've been doing. Just to give a very, very high-level background about who we are and why we're here and what this work is. The State Board has several rules that they're responsible for. And the one in particular that we're working on, State Board Rule 2100, is really about ensuring equity across all schools. It's used as a resource for schools. It's used during budget time to ensure that, you know, there are some minimum standards that are met. It outlines the responsibilities for things like graduation requirements, assessment systems, and so on. And I'll be walking you through that during our presentation today. So the State Board, in the last year, has charged themselves, really, with revising these school quality standards to make them more relevant and rigorous and ensuring that they're really what we want to be asking of schools for students. And a piece of that charge this fall was that they appointed an Education Quality Standards Commission. So this commission is made up of the folks that are here with me today. That's why they're here. God bless them. Teachers, principals, superintendents, folks from the business community. So the board really put this commission together to dig into the standards, to really do some of the heavy lifting as far as brainstorming and thinking about the language and thinking about what we want these expectations to be. The goal and the timeline is that we will propose, we'll bring to you folks a report and some recommendations for the language in time for your June retreat. And then at that time, you as a board will make any changes you see fit, accept them however. And then when you reach the point that you're feeling confident with the rules, you actually initiate the rulemaking process, which is an eight-month process. It goes through several public hearings. There's two administrative rulemaking committees that go through ICAR and ALCAR, the Internal Administrative Rulemaking Committee and Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules.
Let me just interrupt for a second. In front of all the board members, Carol has passed out a sheet that I suspect Mark had something to do with, that describes the rulemaking process.
It was all Carol.
It was all Carol, okay. And this is applicable to what we'll be discussing this afternoon with the special ed rules, but it also will apply to the EQS work that we'll take up in June. So I would suggest you read this and hold on to it for process. Pardon the interruption.
Not at all. And so today, you folks have actually dedicated a pretty significant time on your agenda to really dig in deeper to this. We've been giving monthly updates all along, but it seems pretty clear that the board really wanted to also have the opportunity to have some of these high-level brainstorm conversations, to agree on some of the general principles, to ensure that we as a commissioner are moving in the right direction, and just to really allow for that time for those conversations and those questions. And that being said, obviously, myself and the other folks who are here today will provide input as the work session goes on. And feel free to ask questions. I hope you folks feel comfortable to jump in at any point to explain the thinking behind any of the pieces. I seem to have trouble with PowerPoints when I come to the board today. So I'm going to go up there and start up my PowerPoint. And maybe I'll ask, not to put you guys completely on the spot, but if you want to talk about the few things that you wanted to make sure that these folks heard from you and we worked out earlier this week while I'm setting up my PowerPoint, maybe that would be good. Okay.
At some point, it would be handy. We reviewed this and had a fairly lengthy conversation at our March board meeting. And I noticed that there's some changes in the latest draft. If you could make sure that we see those differences and point out, point them out to us and explain why they were changed. Can we take a minute just to? Sure.
Yes, thank you, Scott.
But that's all before noon.
As Jill said, she's going to run the PowerPoint up there. And I think, as Stephen explained, my role is to represent you on the commission. And I'm mostly here just to keep listening. I wasn't able to make the last meeting when Jill did her report, but I am going still monthly to the Education Quality Standards Commission meetings. And I think we just want to make sure we're always emphasizing the importance that this is a coordinated effort. It's, you know, the State Board of Education, the governor, the agency, and all the professional associations. And the representation we have on this commission does that. So that's, that's what my role is. And if I can serve you in any other more specific role, you know, in the next few months, our goal is to be done by June, so we'll, we'll see how we're doing. But we do meet monthly, and we have emails going on regularly. There are email opportunities, are group opportunities online too, right, Jill? Yeah, so, great.
So as a voice of one of the associations, the school boards, I think it's an exciting time in the confluence of agendas on the part of all those groups that Kathy just mentioned. And I think, as I travel the state, I work directly with boards. And I do development and training and support, as does all the staff at the VSB. The message that we continually send is, board's job is to identify where you want, what you want for results, what it should look like at the end of the line. And to a certain extent, boards have been designing that themselves or having conversations informed by their own professional staff and their community. And I think where we as a state community, to be able to make this kind of, to articulate with this kind of inspirational language, and I'm talking primarily about the graduation standards right now because that's what we've spent the greatest amount of time on. But it really describes very high expectations for every student. And then, and we've started this work to a certain extent, we're trying to also outline what's, what are the supports or structures that will most effectively or efficiently enable school systems to deliver those results for students. And of course, there's any number of detail behind that that I think we would leave in the hands of the local school systems. But it's a very compelling vision to put in front of boards. And I think when citizens can see, this is what, this is what I want for all of my kids. And I understand, my job is to describe, to articulate that and to expect the results and then learn how to measure it. I mean, it's language I think we're all using. But I see it as very, a very effective source of leverage to move, to enable citizens to understand their role and to implement it effectively. So I'm really pleased to be part of this process. I do want to throw in one other note. As a, as a member of a board and a former teacher and building administrator, I'm really pleased with the amount that we're attending to the role of the student in this visioning process, in the sense of saying, this is what it should look like in the end. And what's the student's responsibility? And so there's some language beginning to take shape, even in Rule 2100, that talks about the student working with the teacher on individualized, or personalized learning plans and, and means to demonstrate their proficiency. So I think a lot of the pieces are moving in a great direction. And I'm looking forward to hearing your conversation and adding where it can be helpful.
So what I want to add is that, a little bit about just picturing us in a room coming from these different constituencies and sitting around a table and digging right into the document and coming up with some language that really feels important to us and good to us as educators in the room from whatever perspective that we have. And we've, we've been in this room, I don't know how many times we've met, but we've been in there for a lot of hours, thinking about what makes sense. And we approach each section, as you'll see, and think about it in an intuitive way. Think about it for the power of the student, as Harry was just saying, for the power of the system. And one thing that we're coming to is that while we've been approaching each section and digging in very deeply with each section, that the document as a whole should stand alone as an educational source. And so the idea that how one reads it, maybe somebody not having spent 25 hours looking at it or digging into it, but how somebody who might sit down with it more abstractly from the beginning to the end should feel like an educational experience of, this is what we're asking for graduation standards. And because we're asking this for graduation standards, this is what we want for professional development for teachers. And because we're giving the opportunities for professional development for teachers, this is what we're going to be holding the school leaders to and the school boards to, to hold the school leaders to. And eventually, to be able to get to the kind of accountability and assessment system that would then, at the end, be able to sort of say, are we doing what we said that we're going to be doing on behalf of the students with graduation standards? So in the previous document that we have been working from, a lot of these pieces fit in, and we've been digging deeply into them, but they may not feel like a system as a whole. So when we get back together again for one of our last meetings, our hope is to end with a document that feels logical, that moves from one input to an outcome, to an input to an outcome that feels like it's a system that education and the schools will be able to hold on to. And that feels like a good move for us, not only for the sake of the people who will be using it, but also for our own editing purposes, so that we make sure that the logic follows from one step to the next. And so what, I think what Jill will show you today is another version of where we are in the language, as you said, Stephen, that we've been editing. And where we'll go is creating a much more comprehensive piece again in the next meeting that we have and tying, tying it together even more neatly. So that's, that's where we're headed next. But this is a good place for revision before we, you know, before we head into the next long meeting.
That maybe brings up a question. What's the format? We're going to receive this report in June? Is it, is it going to be a written report? And then we take that and put it into the rule form? Or will you do that for us?
Do you want to speak to that, Jill? What's the format that we'll be passing on?
Sure, because these are state board rules, they're, we do have to actually present a marked-up copy of the existing rules, even if it's a complete strike-through and additional. We have to present it just as we would a legislative change in a bill. But obviously, that's really hard to read, and it's hard to get the bigger concepts. So what we see is presenting you folks with some final language. And formally, as part of the rulemaking process, we do have to also give you a copy of the marked-up version. But this will have a companion document that will summarize the work. Will list our meetings, the other engagement we've gone through, the big concepts behind it, some of the materials you folks have seen already. So there will be a companion. But yeah, we will actually formally give it to you as, as rule language.
Thank you.
And I think we've also started to work on the idea of creating some sort of visual for that too, so you can follow that logical sequence that we hope we're creating.
So I think it might be helpful to just, and forgive me for those of you who have heard this more than once, but I think it's always helpful to sort of kick off these conversations with just a reminder of some of the really big concepts that are driving some of this work. The State Board, back in 2009, put together a Transformation Policy Commission Group that made a lot of recommendations, and included in those recommendations was the revision of the school quality standards. We're really at a nexus of a lot of, there's this confluence of education policy change and pressures from various sources of bringing about a different kind of educational experience or at least shoring up and making it stronger than the existing experience. These include the priorities from the President on down for career and college readiness. One of the things you'll see reflected in the language we'll present to you is competency-based education, proficiency-based, individualized progression, and a personalized learning experience. And also, from the educator's perspective, really about defining student learning objectives. So that as educators, what do we expect all our students to get to? And how can we measure if we're being effective at that? These are a lot of documents, again, forgive me if this is, you know, redundant for some of you folks, but I always think it's really important to just sort of remember not only the historical documents that have informed this work, but some of the things that are currently going on right now. Roots of Success, back in 2009, was the document that the, the agency put together that did a case study of three schools who had high poverty and yet were performing really well and what those schools did. And a few of those have obviously come out, who they are, not the least of which, I think it was the Free Press that had an article recently about Montgomery Elementary School and Beth O'Brien. She's the principal from Montgomery, and she's also on our EQS commission. We're really thrilled to have her there. They do just some amazing work with their students. So if you haven't checked that article out, I'd recommend it. And also, I highly recommend Roots of Success.
Jill, I want to interrupt you there too. On our commission also is newly acknowledged Andrew, but help me with pronouncing his.
Andy Petulini.
Petulini.
Oh, Andy Petulini's on the committee grade.
From Brattleboro, Wyndham County. You know, it's really, so we have that.
Everyone know where Wyndham County is?
They have that same kind of success in a similar type school that Beth O'Brien is from in Montgomery.
The commission that you folks put together is really remarkable. Andy's another great, you know, Beth, we're thrilled to have Beth on there, Beth O'Brien and Andy Petulini. I think you folks actually might have seen a presentation from them on the Academy.
Yes. Again, in Brattleboro.
Last year sometime.
Yes.
So also, this past year, the board heard from the Vermont Superintendent's Association. Representatives Elaine Pinkney and Martha Tucker came before you, I believe, to really talk about some of the initiatives that they're putting out. And linked with that, in, I think it was December, the Superintendent's Association, the School Boards Association hosted a press conference and really discussed what their joint priorities are. Again, these things are very much reflected in the work that we've been doing for you folks. And also, they're very much aligned with the initiatives that the governor has put forth. He really wants to ensure that we are getting students college and career ready, that we do have rigorous standards for math and science, and that we do ensure that students have that personalized experience, those opportunities for things like dual enrollment and other opportunities outside of the classroom. Also, again, another confluence here that is not necessarily coincidental is this legislation that's currently moving through the State House called, we're calling it Flexible Pathways. But it's really encompassing so many of the same policy points that we are working on in this work. It has personalized learning plans for students from grade seven through 12. It expands the dual enrollment program for high school students so that at least every high school student gets at least an opportunity to take two college-level courses. It also expands the Early College Program. A lot of you folks might remember that. That's the VAST program through Vermont Technical College. In that case, it's really for those high-achieving students who are interested in pursuing STEM. They actually un-enroll at their high school and spend their senior year as enrolled in college at VAST.
And Jill, they get the both, just so everybody's clear. They get the high school, senior year high school and freshman year in college, sort of combined.
So, so again, there are pieces you'll see in the graduation requirements that are very much aligned with these flexible pathways to graduation for students. In addition, you folks have heard from the group you folks put together to do the Vermont Guidelines for Future Leader Effectiveness. There are a lot of those same priorities in here about how to do teacher prep programs and teacher expectations differently to align with this work. I always love that I threw in ESEA reauthorization. That's just a red herring. It would be great if some of that also was reflective of this work. But, but I guess it's just a point to say, if nothing else, that we, as a state, are not waiting for those kind of changes, that we are going to try to work within the system that we have to do what we can to improve student learning. And again, there are aspects of the state board rule that are very much compliance-based. They're ensuring that schools do give these students these opportunities, that they do comply with these state board rules. And that the commissioners, forgive me, the secretary and the state board can do something about that if they see that students are not getting those opportunities. And so we are, for instance, just as one example, the assessment system, it's only referenced the way that it really has been in the past in this rulemaking. It's pointing to whatever the existing state accountability system is. It requires the development of a local comprehensive assessment system, which is already in existence as well. So really, just trying to, regardless of what pressures may or may not be coming from the federal level, what's the best system we can build to make sure students get these opportunities? And also, the Common Core state standards are standards that this board has adopted and that schools are moving towards. You also heard last month from folks from the agency about the Next Generation Science Standards. And then we do continue to operate under the Vermont Framework of Standards and Learning Opportunities for those content areas that are not covered by Common Core Next Generation. So there's a lot of standards, which is why, I think I have a slide in here that says, maybe I don't anymore, that you'll see throughout these, these proposed rule language. It references standards currently approved by the State Board. Rather than having a patchwork of various places that we're pointing the reader to that may change in six months, a year, five years, these are state board rules, and they direct folks to, to implement this work within the framework of state board, things currently approved by the state board. So just again, as a reminder of what these rules do, they really are, and this is from statutory language, they are to ensure that all students in Vermont Public Schools are afforded educational opportunities that are substantially equal in quality and are designed to enable them to achieve or exceed the standards approved by the state board. They're also designed to ensure continuous improvement in student performance and high-quality programs to enable students to attain those standards. So I think I'll just leave this up, and I'll move back over to my seat because I know this is not really for me to talk to you folks, but I think it's important to sort of set the stage. I'll hand out some of the language, as Chair Morse mentioned. I did put together yesterday the latest language and then highlighted specifically what has changed since last month because there were, we did some pretty heavy lifting at the last meeting to some, some different sections. And so I want to draw your attention to those. Also, you heard from the Health Commissioner, Dr. Chen, last month. The Health Department's recommendations are in there and noted as the Health Department recommendations. They're for your consideration, as all, all of these rules are. So because of the level and the volume of new language from last month, those are highlighted in the piece that I'll hand out. So I think with that, maybe I'll move around to my seat. And if you folks would like to just have a conversation amongst yourselves, if you'd like me to guide you through the different big-picture pieces, I'll want to be taking really good notes because what I'd love to do is leave here with either some idea of that we're on the right track or pieces you'd like us to address, not digging into wordsmithing of the policy language, but I really want to make sure that I document what you folks would like to see in there. And then we can work on the policy language and bring it back to you next month, if that makes sense.
I think that makes great sense. Stacy?
How do you go back? I'm just thinking again, so Vermont has adopted the Common Core, doesn't it, the Next Generation Science Standards? And did you say whatever that can cover, we're also still aligned with Vermont Framework of Standards?
Right.
So I guess my question is, from my view, the Vermont Framework of Standards reads very differently and objectives than the Common Core does. So is that something that we are going to wrestle with or is that, what is happening?
I think that's a great, I think that's, that's up to you folks. You know, I think there was actually frankly, a lot of concern that the framework was going away completely with the Common Core and the Next Generation Science Standards. Because the, as you know, the Common Core is, is math and ELA really, and, and Next Gen is just science. And so there are a lot of other things that are addressed. And there are a lot of those, for lack of a better term, transferable or 21st century skills like communication and listening and problem solving that we still did want to have expected of our students that are in the framework. But yes, absolutely, it is a very, and I think that, that would be another great conversation for you folks to have. Because those are State Board, those were put together by the Board.
And that's exactly where I was going to go, just because they're contradictory, especially in math. Talking to math teachers, Common Core is completely different than Frameworks. So if we say standards adopted by the Board, do schools get to pick? You know, because the, it's, the frameworks are approved and so are the Common Core, so do they get to play around? And that's where I think there's a lot of worry among educators right now. Just what should we be teaching? And even with Common Core, I'm a social studies teacher, and there's no social studies standards per se, except there's social studies through, so, so skill-based, but nothing content-based. And so where do we go? Do we go half to Common Core and then go back to Frameworks? Or, so I think that is a big issue of reading through this document when you keep going through the standards adopted. There's so many. If you put them all together and then have all your personal learning plans, your IEPs, your 504s, and just try to make a plan for your class, where do you go? I mean, there's just so much paperwork to go through as a teacher. I think that's a huge concern and just not a lot of clarification.
Bill?
To reinforce the points that I've just made, I couldn't agree with you more. And in multiple pathways, which I'll discuss in the legislative agenda, is that there is a serious philosophical difference between doing Common Core and doing multiple pathways. One says a rigid, one size fits all for everybody. The other says each student and each child will have a different plan. You can't do those. That's a bigger policy issue than we're going to resolve today. But I think this is one of the things that we need to talk about in terms of the retreat, is what is our fundamental philosophy, what is our fundamental direction? And let's be clear and consistent. And to the degree we can is to not have these two things contradictory. On the one hand, we have to hold on to this federal money in some kind of fashion, but we've got a real yaw in the system.
Margaret?
I think it's useful to remember that the Vermont Framework of Standards was developed by a very inclusive process in Vermont. So over four thousand Vermonters were involved in developing that framework. And so I think that you have a lot of buy-in to the Vermont Framework and a lot of support for the vital results section of the framework, which addresses those intangible skills. And I think that buy-in goes beyond educators to the community members and board members who were involved in the development process. So I think there's a real difference between the Vermont Framework of Standards as developed and these nationally, nationally-developed standards which have been adopted, I guess.
A technical question that Margaret has just triggered for me. The science standards are not finished with their development yet, are they? We haven't really adopted the science standards. We've talked about them, but we have not adopted them.
It just came out, what, last week, the Next Generation? Okay.
Okay, well, if you'd like, we can dig in. I'll pass these around to you folks.
This is an update since four eleven?
Yes. So, so what I'm handing now.
Got to work off an old one.
So we tried a few times as a group to, to look at the existing language and it, it becomes really cumbersome and it, and it becomes a wordsmithing exercise. So what I've just handed out is a potential reorder of the rules. And with the highlighted sections that are in gray is really significant language change from what you folks saw last month. These are the things we spent time on last, last meeting and the feedback from the Health Department. So before I just dig right in here, so the way that the rules are ordered right now did not necessarily follow the order like Annie had laid out about how one thing leads to the next. And so one of the things that came up at the last board meeting, which I thought was a really good point, is that as soon as we start to try to work from existing language, it really starts to limit the thinking and forces us to already kind of withdraw from some of the more progressive thinking. So I think we're, we're considering proposing to you folks that the lang, that the order of the rules, even something as simple as the order in which they are read, not only influences your understanding of them, hopefully for the better, but it leads one step to the next. And so that's why what I, what I have projected up there and what I've handed out is really trying to get a better sense for you folks and for folks reading this document about the progression that one thing leads to the next. So for example, what are the conditions, practices, and resources? What do we need to ask of schools to provide this experience for students? What's the curriculum? How is the curriculum developed? What are the different expectations for the different grade levels? What's the learning environment? What are some of the key pieces we want to make sure that all students have access to? What's the professional development that would go along with that? Then there's the development of the state and local comprehensive assessment system. There's graduation requirements. Based on all the things above, you develop as a school, as a school board, a continuous improvement plan. It was, in the former language, it was called an action plan. We're proposing that it be called a continuous improvement plan or something like that. Because really, this is something that we want to not only include all the existing various plans that we ask of schools, but guides improvement. And you don't get to that development of that plan or reflecting on that plan without the inputs listed above. And based on the plan and what the agency sees in the plans and what your outcomes are for your students and what you're reporting and what you're seeing, what your community is seeing, there is a section of the standards that's about compliance with EQS and reporting this out to your community, reporting it out to parents, reporting it out to students. So that may not be the final necessary order, but we're trying to get it a little bit more of a logical order in these things. It was, it was a little all over the map and I think there probably was a very good reason why they were ordered that way. But that's why the order of what I've handed out to you folks is what it is. So I guess we can just dig in. We spent a lot of time at our meeting, I think it was April third, talking about school leadership, what the expectations are. What are things that we can put into State Board rule that would be specific enough and rigorous enough to ensure high-quality educational leadership, but flexible enough that they allow for creativity and different experiences at different schools? We spent a lot of time talking about, just as one example, there are principals who teach a class in the classroom. I think Armando probably did that at Reading, where you were teaching principal, right? So, and then there, when he was at Essex, I think it would probably have been highly unlikely for him as a principal to have been able to take on an AP honors course. You know, so, so how do you allow for the leadership at the school to have those kind of student interactions at different degrees for their own benefit and for the students' benefit in rulemaking? So this is, so number four on the first page you're looking at is, is one of the pieces we're trying to get at. And by all means, if, at any point in time, if I'm not getting at something that you folks want, just feel free.
Well, and let me, this is scheduled as a work session. So as, in terms of a format, what I would suggest is you folks explain whatever section we're looking at. Board members, if you have comments or questions, let's chime in there. And I would say that to folks in the audience as well. And let's do it section by section. But let's give the commission an opportunity to explain their view, why they've made these changes, and then we'll move on to the next section. Does that seem fair?
I have one comment on this leadership section.
Go ahead.
So number eight seems really fuzzy right now. And I know that there are a number of schools who are looking, these are the schools who are part of the accountability system in terms of Green Mountain Star. They're looking at implementing a school community council. And the purpose of that council, I believe, is to not be a school board, which is policy and regulatory, but also not be a PTA, which is doing, you know, fundraising and stuff. But to be some hybrid of that, there is some research, I guess, that goes along with these school community councils. And I guess all's I'm going to say is I would encourage you to be less fuzzy in number eight and more specific about what you mean by number eight.
Got a couple of comments on the same section there.
Go ahead, Bill.
First off, I want to say that our ask is the four eleven version and this substantively the same. Is this just reordered or is there substantive changes?
The four eleven is the same, I just, the same, it's just.
It's just moved.
Moved around.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Essentially, yes, yes, essentially.
Okay.
Major, major pieces are the same as what you got in the eleven.
Major things, small changes, or corrections?
Right.
Fine.
Yes, thank you.
Let me butt in just one. I'm, I'm just noticing that we're starting out today on section twenty-one, twenty, point eight. And what we were looking at. Too many copies. We started out with twenty-one, ten.
Right.
So everything from twenty-one, ten up to twenty-one, twenty is, is the same? Or have you reordered?
It's different order.
It's reordered.
We'll come back to twenty-one, ten sometime later.
Remember, I only taught school for a year, so.
No, that's okay, it's not easy. And you know, this is me at nine o'clock last night, who knows if this is really the right order? But it did seem, it did seem helpful to try to go in sort of the order that as somebody who's digesting this would, would see this in.
I think what's complicated for us is the one we got in the mail, so the one we read and marked up is the other one. So what we have to do is look at the sections and compare to the notes we made. And I think we can do that, it's just us getting our head around it.
Okay.
On the leadership piece, a couple of very small points and one bigger thing to think about is the term school leadership team in two and create professional learning groups in three. Those are contemporary hot issues and hot button things. And I'm worried that this language will become dated before long. A group ten years from now might not recognize that, I feel like it's the right terms. The substantive issue is, I'm wondering how a principal can do this. This is, as principals are just driven batty as it is now with a constant stream of things and we're going to have, have them do a new school leadership team, create professional learning groups, and then get around to this teacher evaluation business, which has really suffered from a lack of staffing to be able to pull off correctly. And so I don't know the answer to this one. You can't go out and the state can't go out and buy a bunch of new principals to back up these people, but I'm wondering if we're asking too much and setting up some unrealistic expectations.
I also think that how we look at evaluations has changed. You know, what the teacher and leadership evaluation group is looking at and what we're looking at is that it should not just be the principal doing the evaluation. There should be a leadership team that maybe Mark teaches two classes, has the administrative endorsement to also then provide, whether it's evaluation, mentoring, what, you know, those things. Because you're right, Bill, the, the current model, and again, having been a principal with a hundred and forty-eight teachers and three of us, it was constantly a battle. At the time, when we tried to do that, the association didn't go along with, with that piece of teachers sort of being evaluated. But that has changed over the last years, over the last fifteen years. And I think the model you describe is unworkable and it would have to be a team of people who are working on evaluation supervision. And maybe the real difficult ones go to the administrators, but the more ongoing support would be shared by others. So I think that that's, those are clarifications.
Agree with where you're going. The question becomes is where do we get the staffing for the teacher leadership team?
We have plenty of staffing in the state of Vermont, we have the smallest staff to student.
Well, you also have a lot of very small schools. So you have some schools that have a part-time principal, a teaching principal, who maybe has three full-time classroom faculty and a bunch of part-time certified faculty. So the creation of an evaluation, a leadership team in those settings is, is very different from your typical high school, middle school, or larger school. So the rules need to either be differentiated or need to reflect what's feasible, I would imagine, in schools, whether they're large high schools or whether they're very rural, small elementary schools.
So I talked to my principal about, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I talked to my principal about this and he was excited. And he's at a bigger Chittenden County school. And he was thinking, you know, to make this all work, if he could release a teacher for point two of their contract and they take on a leadership role and then he takes on point two of teaching, it doesn't change staffing. And then it has that more integration, so you really don't have to change anything. And he actually felt really supported by number six, the idea of no more than ten teachers per individual. And he thought that was a really welcome change. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in there. And he was excited, the idea that if this is in writing, he then has that reason to say, I can't do this other meeting, I'm teaching a class. Or I have some other commitments and I've released another teacher for a contract to do these other duties. So I think it's an opportunity and I don't think there's a problem with staffing.
I'm just going to chime in in that the, down in Bennington, a number of years ago, it was a big shift. And the principal waited a long time to prep the board for many years that when the assistant principal left, that she was going to replace the assistant principal with five administrators released from teaching classes who all had administrative degrees. So one taught history, did the finance, the one that did English did the curriculum, the one that, I mean, so each one had their own expertise in, in the classroom and as an administrator. The question comes up with, what we in Bennington ended up doing is if they teach more than us, they're still part of the teachers' union contract? Because you have to weigh whether you're the point three or the point two out of the administrator contract or out of the, so you know, there's a lot of little details that get worked out. But I think in terms of smaller school districts, smaller schools are usually closer to other smaller schools. And I think it gives the opportunity to do exactly that of a leadership team. The leadership team in most districts that I'm aware of are principals and, you know, assistants that may be from all the surrounding schools meeting together, not just one school. So I, I definitely applaud the, the looking at it differently, especially since we've had some experience, which was actually resisted at first, especially by board members feeling like who might be accountable. But it's worked really well and it shares the responsibility.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. Looking at small schools, I think, I think Margaret brings up an issue that, you know, if you have thirty kids, forty kids, you may only have two teachers along with the teaching principal. Doesn't mean that one of those teachers can't be part of that leadership team. And having taught in two small schools, I know that sometimes you get one person, PE person comes in once a week. Well, that person also works in other buildings. So then you figure out who's going to evaluate Steven. So there's things that you can work out. But it's a little bit, maybe a little bit different than it would be in a larger school, but I don't think the concept should be any different. The reality of now moving to requiring people to teach, principals to teach, having done a little bit of that myself, kids lose out. Doesn't matter if you say, I can't go to this meeting. If an emergency happens or something happens, you have to be there. So I think that, you know, when I was a principal of the largest high school in the state, I was on the, I had one of the advisories, I was an advisor. So that gave me the connection to kids. Principals don't have to be teaching a class to be in the classrooms on a regular basis. A good principal is out and about, visiting classrooms, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, in the classrooms. That gives them that perspective. They can also be called in to do mini lessons. Maybe it's on budget or management or whatever it could be. But I think to expect, it's a wonderful thought actually, to be able to think about teaching a class, but knowing that ultimately kids will lose out because that principal will have, something will ultimately arise on a regular basis. Even though it's a good concept, there are ways that we want to be able to do that. And this may be too specific in the rules to say that they must do one of these four things. Ultimately, it's the superintendents which should be evaluating their principals on the, on their ability to be visible, to be out and about. on their ability to be visible, to be out and about. I know that doesn't happen in many schools in Vermont. The principals either get caught in their offices because of issues, are uncomfortable, don't see the value or the need, or don't have good mentoring to help them see what a strong principal does. So I think that to add one of these four may be well-intended, but I think could be, you know, could be a challenge to folks. And these are, so this is just being...
I think you're...
I don't know that I read this as that it's one of these four things required.
It's a jazz.
I think it's encouraged, the way I read this.
And I think what Armando is saying, and you're right, Stephen, really reflects the conversation we had about this section because there are several principals on the commission who were weighing the different areas, ways you can be involved and engage with your students.
It does have the word "must" in there, though.
That's why I was, that's why, you know, or shall, or maybe can.
Well, we've been, again, I mean, and that's another reason why we're here. But you are, again, these are the things that keep coming up. And so we have to keep thinking about them. But this D, you know, is, you know, we would question, you know, other methods of student engagement as approved by the board, meaning the local board. But that really does, as Armando said, come into, you know, the superintendent who's responsible for evaluating the principals and maybe developing their goals. So I think, you know, I think we're hearing several reasons why we want to make sure this is, you know, this is there but remains flexible.
Stacy.
I'm really encouraged. I've been an administrator for about 10 years in my office. I love to be that kind of administrator. I love the holistic intention behind this. I guess my question is, is the goal, I can see two goals. The goal is to provide the principal with more opportunity to observe and authentically assess what teachers are doing? Or, and possibly go about helping the principal build relationships? And I think, we look at the relationship side of it. Generally, it's so important in a school that children really know their principal. And that he is such a role model, is such a tone for the school. I saw a great school in DC where the principal turned the junkyard with the recess. That was his, always was outside. So maybe it's not observing student learning. I think it's doing that number five. But how are we observing student learning? Is there any movement? Is it an hour a day engaging with students? So whether that's sitting and observing the class or it's outside at recess, or it's walking through the hallways at VHS? I'm not sure what the different, what it looks like. But I'd love to see the goal of the relationship part, not just observing.
This is so reflective of the conversation that we had in these meetings. And I'm sorry, somebody raised their hand and I keep...
No, I thought...
Okay. Oh, that's okay. I can follow. I'll be quick. So, yeah, like Kathy said, you know, the principals that were in here, on the one hand, they felt like it was, teaching a course and making that kind of commitment would be almost an impossibility. And that the student would end up with a substitute or not having the teacher there very often. But they said on the few times that they had, they had to fill in or they had to teach a class, was such a valuable experience for them as a principal. You know, one of the examples was certainly during the school year, I would not be able to necessarily teach a course. But at the last minute during our summer school, our math, we weren't able to find somebody to teach the math summer school course, and the principal did it. And he said he loved it, and it was so powerful for him and important for him that he's already signed up to do it again this year. So the advisory is a great way, I mean, there are all kinds of different ways. And if we're being too prescriptive in this, then we'll, I think, I like the idea of the, you know, it doesn't have to be engaged in observing student learning. The idea was really twofold. It was just as much about what the principal gets out of it as what the students would get out of it.
But I do want to say with, you know, one of the highlights is that interaction with kids outside of the regular classroom. And I said to Stephen after she mentioned that, recess was the highlight of my day when I was in, in all the schools I ever worked in. I was outside with the kids, in the cafeteria. Lot happens in that time. People observe it. Then you're acting as a role model. So there's a lot of good things that can occur without having to be in the classroom. But ultimately, it's all about relationships. You know, when it comes right down to it, that's really what it's all about.
Rama?
Would you state, just state your name so far? Rama Schneider from Williamstown. I want to state first that the ideas put there are good. But I'm looking at this and I'm thinking that it's sounding more like a job description and something that should be at State Board of Education Policy. You've heard about small schools have certain needs, large schools have certain needs. I'm from Williamstown. We're in between. And we have a different set of needs, too. And as we go through this process of trying to cut down on the administration and the teacher ratios, the students, et cetera, you know, these folks in our schools are going to need flexibility and not a harder line-defined job that they're going to do. And a lot of the jobs of how principals and where leadership ends up, whether it's at the principal level or down lower at the teacher level, is also defined very much by the superintendent and the type of superintendent you hire. So in some ways, I, you know, what gets me is I think you're talking more about a job description here, which belongs at the school board level and the superintendence level where they're going to do the hiring. I mean, although these ideas are all good, I think they get way too prescriptive as far as what should be in place.
Sir? Scott?
Hi, I'm Scott Mosher. And in my role, I end up seeing multiple...
What is your role, so, Will?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Everyone doesn't know that yet?
Two roles.
I'm joking. I run the teacher apprenticeship program. And we...
And you're also on the standards board. That's the other piece.
Yes, I'm on the standards boards as well, which is why I'm here. But with my role as the head of TAP, Teacher Apprenticeship Program, I spend a lot of time in schools, elementary, middle, and high schools throughout the state. And I can tell you from those experiences of seeing those schools on multiple visits, that the schools that have the best culture and not only from the student's perspective, from teacher's perspective, are schools where the principal is well-known throughout the building. And it doesn't matter if it's a 1,400-student school or if it's a 300-student school. That's the common thread that I've seen is culture in the school increases dramatically when the principal is known. And it's almost, it's almost like you could do a test and show a picture on a screen and say, who is that? And if the majority of students, if not all of them, say that's Principal so-and-so, you can guarantee that the culture is good. The other thing that it does from a teacher's perspective is when a principal's in classrooms on a regular basis, and, you know, I think of like Fairfax, where Principal Walsh at the middle level is in the classroom so frequently. And I ask the teachers, how do you feel when the principal comes through? And they're like, it's no big deal because we see him all the time. Versus going to a school where the principal comes in once a semester and it's like, oh, my gosh, why is he here? What did I do wrong? I must, I've got to check everything. And that's that school culture where everyone feels a lot more comfortable. And I don't know how to make it prescriptive, you know, how prescriptive it should be. But I think that is critical to the long-term success of the school and the biggest impact on the students.
All right, in the interest of time, I'm going to move us along. I think to sum up, what you're hearing here is that we like some of the thinking that goes behind this, but it's maybe a little too detailed, a little too prescriptive. That seems to be the word of the morning on this section. So that's what I would...
Disconnect, that you need to make sure that all the pieces fit together. And boards typically, independent Ramonters really want to do their job. And they're going to, they're going to say to the superintendent, but this says this. And I've, you know, I've seen it for 20 years, so I would make sure they line up.
Okay.
All right, so moving on to 2120.8.2.
One quick thing as we go into the next section. I compliment you folks for actually shortening this thing. I watched it from version to version to version. And it's become shorter and cleaner and clearer and keep going.
The document becomes shorter and the discussion becomes longer.
So really, you know, a lot of this was existing language, but the parts that are highlighted certainly are ones I think that are important for you folks to spend a little time on this morning. I know that we talked about this a lot last month as well. See that all staff shall demonstrate annual growth, et cetera. Was really trying to get at language that was reflective of the expectations throughout the document for what students will have. And frankly, really, you know, what we, what schools, what teachers, what principals, superintendents will do with this, with all this data and all of this, you know, hopefully continuous feedback that they have. I know that Krista had proposed some language for F and G. I'm not sure we captured it completely, so I welcome any conversation or thoughts you folks have on that. Really trying to get at the fact that, and a lot of this is existing language. Right now, there are, as you folks know, these sort of maximum number of class sizes. And the department, as part of a bill passed a few years ago, does have optimum class size policies on our website. But we were trying to get at, and maybe you'd be better at articulating your thoughts than I were, I was, about different things like humanities than maybe English and social studies, for example. Because the old language actually specifically called out English language arts teachers as having a different role size than all the other content areas. And also a piece that I don't think we've captured necessarily because it's really hard to get as specific, so I welcome the conversation, is about how you address things like team teaching.
And student numbers. That was my question. Because right now, even though I share 70 students, my role says I only have 35. But when I give an essay, I grade 70 of them. So it's just how do you determine how many students teachers actually have to fit into that number? So that's conversation. And just how do you, what do you want class sizes to be, I guess?
Say again?
What do you want class sizes to be? Because right now, you can really manipulate the numbers with team teaching or co-teaching because it really cuts the numbers in half. So it's reported back to the state. I don't just have 35 students in those two classes. I have 70. But the state sees 35. So I think the numbers might be...
Does it count as two blocks, though, or does it count as one block?
So, because we, every day, so two blocks. But you still have those students. So what do you want to know back as a state? So those are still my students, but technically, they're not on paper.
I'd ask the question, though, for this purpose, which is more of a policy statement. You know, are we to define, you know, how that works here? Or is that more of an administrative procedure that would be better off with the agency?
But even here, I could have 200 students, but it reported only as 100. So I could still fit in and still have 100 on my class role. So if you work the numbers. So if that's okay with the board for teachers that's 200.
Administrative teacher conversation, obviously. I get...
But, I mean, this, it's not just humanities. I mean, I've been talking to teachers that they're teaching math and science and engineering together. And so it's still the same issues. When you have these multiple teachers from different contents coming together, how do you measure that with class role size?
Again, I think that, you know, Krista, when you say that somebody, like, when I had teachers who taught team, and right now, team teach, that counts as two blocks. So it's two out of their five.
Right.
So that's where an administrator would say, okay, that equals whatever the average is. And there is going to be more team teaching. You're absolutely right. But I also think that as a state, and this is not anything about this, but we have, you know, an unrealistic, I believe, ratio right now. Or maybe a positive, a wonderful thing. But it's very expensive in a state that our enrollment continues to drop and our staffing continues to rise, and our budgets continue to rise. That's from a...
Haven't they tipped back the other way in terms of numbers? Aren't they declining now?
Barely declining. I mean, actually, this coming year, I think staffing in general went up. Right, Bill? Is that, our support staff numbers went up this year.
Yeah, they went up. Out of about 18,500, there were about 200.
This is staff support, not teachers.
No, the, our instructional staffing actually hurts it down a little bit.
Why, what's the reason for the increase?
For me?
Local?
What's the reason for the increase?
Bill, that's a challenge. Those are local decisions. And, you know, support staff is one of those areas that, anyway.
Krista, would you put another section in here that outlines how students are actually counted?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, especially just for...
All right, there's a suggestion. We're not going to work out the language for you today, Jill.
That's very naughty.
What?
Answering the question. We'll leave it to them to answer it.
Yes.
Hey, we have to wrestle with these someplace.
Any other comments on this section? Kay?
E?
Yes, go ahead.
Just the licensing endorsement. Now, we're getting into these new courses that aren't just in departments. And how do we accommodate that through endorsement? Even at South Burlington, there's a Big Picture program. And so what endorsement do you need for something like Big Picture or Peer Leadership? Or there are these classes that don't fit neatly into little departments. So...
And actually, one of the, Krista, one of the nice things is that the federal, that whole HQT piece, where if you're going to teach social studies and there was an economics perspective, you had to have an economics background, is being sunsetted. So that will make it a little easier. The question you ask, I think is a good question, that probably is not a State Board of Education. It's more the Professional Standards Board around licensing. But it's a question that needs to be answered because now we have people teaching maybe a more comprehensive courses as opposed to very defined, yes. And I don't know, that's a standard, I mean, I'm not quite sure. Scott, you're a standards, you're the only representative here from the standards board. So maybe that's something that can be brought back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or Jill, maybe a standards board representative could be at one of the meetings when you talk about this to see how do you address that question? And since HQT is going to be going away, then we don't have to worry about that federal component. It's more of a state component.
That may be one of the things driving your staff numbers, too, are keeping them high.
I would say it's more of our organization and our student structure on the state is what's driving our numbers. But yes, you know.
Yeah, it can get really rigid.
All right, so the next...
And they kind of go away, though.
The next place where I see changes is in 2120.85, Health Services.
Yep, so you'll recall last month that you folks, the Health Department Commissioner, Dr. Harry Chen, came in. And I thought did a really great job of making the connection between student health and learning and the important role that schools and the opportunities that kids have in schools can improve their health for their life. So these were, I simply took the language that his staff sent along and plunked them in here with the term from BDH in here. So our commission has not really spent time on this. This is for your consideration. I think in some cases, it's probably recommending some best practices. So it might be that some of these suggestions go into the companion document that go along with the rules. And maybe they're not the right grain size to be a rule, but are certainly things that we want to make sure that we're encouraging schools to do.
That was my one thought on looking at the health requirements is compared to math and science, which is just, here's math, here's science, and here's three pages on health. Could we balance that out a little bit? I think the grain size question is exactly the right way to approach it.
Again, I'm going to ask that you look at the changing, if you're going to be expecting counselors and/or nurses to be doing more in the schools, that you take a look at these numbers of students per individual? at these, these numbers of students per individual, if their role is increasing.
I think that's a great point. I am hoping, if you folks have suggestions on what you want to do to that, I definitely recall and support, and I think we talked about it as a commission, that we would agree that, especially when we get to the part about personalized learning plans, that we should include language in here beyond what we've added C. School counseling programs must support the development and implementation of personalized learning plans. But if you folks think we need to adjust the numbers here, or get more specific about what is required of school counselors, then-
Well, I would definitely say reduce the numbers, and I'm not going to-
She went back.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
So not everyone's confused. We were talking about Health Services, we're now back on School Counselors, and there were no proposed changes. Sean Marie has some thoughts, though.
Well, we're in the same, we're in 21.8.
21.4.
8.4, okay.
On purpose, I'm doing that on purpose.
So this is just the same language you pulled out of the current existing language, and it's not changed. So I'm not, I think it should be lower.
Yep.
And if I say something outrageous, people will think, oh, my God, she wants to spend more money. If I say, oh, just lower it by two, they're going to say she's stingy. So I would automatically say 300 and 200, but Armando might disagree with me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was having a sidebar conversation with Mark.
We're going to move you, like they did Lachlan and I.
Well, no, we're talking about, it was about the microphone.
Yeah, this is a great-
Sean Marie is saying in the School Counselors that the numbers change by 100, from 400 to 300, 300 to 200.
Are you ready to have, those are financial decisions that are-
That's what I know.
They are. But when we add PLPs, that has financial consequences, and I saw the Guidance Counselors as being the person specified here as being in charge of PLPs.
We want to be careful, I think, that's what I was thinking, too, Bill, actually, that it would be Guidance Counselors. I went to visit Mount Abe, and I visited a couple of other schools that actually have not, they actually have folks, whether it's licensed or not licensed, who are managing the PLPs for students, and students have a daily, instead of a study hall, let's say, they have a period where they go and meet with their PLP coordinator supervisor.
Size or whatever.
Yeah. And one of the things that schools have done, I mean, it's a fact, we have a declining enrollment statewide. We've lost 25% of our population in the last 16 years. So one of the ways that helps maintain the licensed staff is by maybe reorganizing how people work. And one of the things that schools have done is, yes, the Guidance Counselor is part of it, but they now have, you know, one, two, or three licensed folks who are managing this, working with the teachers, working with the families, working with the students as a way of refocusing staff as our enrollments continue to drop. And I think that's, that's a different way.
I just want to make sure our language is flexible enough-
It has to be flexible. You're right, sorry, Bill, right.
My first instinct was it wasn't flexible enough, but I'll leave that for you folks to look at.
And just as an aside related to this, in the S-130, the flexible pathways legislation that's moving through, it also puts together, at least the current version does, a working group to hammer out the details of personalized learning plans, best practices, models, and I would probably expect some recommendations there on at least some best practices for staff.
As long as it's not going back to what Bill said, it can't be too rigid in how a school does it. You know, my school may do it differently in Stevens, and so on, so forth. So there has to be that flexibility. I think when you start getting into numbers, you know, I've been encouraging, you know, for the last four years, to raise the staff-student ratio, or particularly licensed staff-to-student ratio, when I look at statewide. Of course, you know, there are in particular schools that have a pretty high correlation between licensed staff and kids. But the majority of our schools around the state do not have that problem. So I think we have to be careful when we start talking about numbers. The impact, as Sean Marie said, as a board member, how that may impact her budget process, and then getting that budget process passed in light of six cent increase on our statewide property tax, and probably another, if nothing changes, another six cents next year. So I think that's something that we have to be really careful of when we look at numbers.
Lachlan.
So 2120.8.4 says that, it just says a representative of the school, and then that's in, or, no, that's in the graduation part, and then I have 2120.8.4, which means, whatever that may be, or, you know.
It's got to be more than that, though.
It's also like, it's a council, like, you know.
Yeah.
They don't see that as a personalized learning plan.
So would the word must, if the word must were eliminated?
Yeah.
That would make it not mandatory, but just optional, kind of thing. I think the must, you're right, Lachlan, is a little too. And what Lachlan just described is exactly what's going to be happening around the state, as different people make it fit their, I like the academy model, something I tried to do 20 years ago, that could meet those needs while somebody else handles it in a different way, so.
Okay, so you heard some suggestions on counseling, Health Services. I think we covered, so we'll move on to 2120-88, and no changes there. Not hearing any thoughts.
You're going to go to, this is actually what Stacy was talking about earlier. If you take a look at, under the curriculum, 8.9, you have A1A.
A.
It says align with the standards. So are we being more specific about this? Which standards? Which standards are we aligning with?
Common core. I mean, that's how I see it.
But if you don't have common core, then you're supposed to rely on the other one?
If you don't have common core, then you have to, as a state, by law, develop your own standards that are at least as rig, as-
Rigorous.
Rigorous, thank you, as the common core. And I think there are only three or four states that have opted for that, and now they're struggling coming up with those standards. So I think that, you know, that everything that we're working on as a state and schools, and as I think for those states are involved, the 40 somewhat states, are working towards a common core. The question, I think, is how do we balance that with frameworks and some of the other things that folks may still value.
So that's a question. I mean, are we taking the Vermont framework of standards and then substituting the common core for the content areas where there is common core and leaving the rest as it is? Are we giving educators one document, which is these are Vermont standards? Or are we saying it's this, this, and this? That's work I think somebody needs to clarify. Because the fallback for most people is the Vermont framework of standards, which people have worked with, and which were very collaboratively developed. And if we're substituting national standards for Vermont standards, we need to be clear where we're doing that.
So could you come up with one document that-
Yeah, I mean, I think what Margaret is sort of suggesting or asking is what will eventually happen, is that we will have, the common core has in math, reading, language arts, science is the next generation of science, which will be embedded in there. And then for social studies and some other areas, it's really, it's, there's a larger framework, but it'll be the locals who determine that. All then assessed through, one of the assessment models would then be the smarter balance, along with the local assessments that schools are required to set up, and are required to set up right now. The key would be for us to be able to use all of those, not just one assessment for accountability, where right now, that was one of the reasons we didn't choose to go with the waiver, is that it's still basically using one test as the accountability for the state, student, class, teacher, you name it. And what we're trying to get is that much broader, using multiple, many, many different measures to determine whether Mark is a successful student, or a successful teacher, or a successful school, state, whatever. And that's the challenge that we're having between the state and some of the federal requirements.
Okay.
There's a couple. Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just think if the, I'm just imagining a trickle back, trickle down, like Krista and Lachlan.
Yeah.
I think that if it is going to be some sort of run or hierarchy, I think that would be helpful, where a visual could be really helpful. So what's the common core, if you can't find your thing, or whatever.
They're plugging the names.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's not possible.
No, 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 no.
It matches the, or state. Just what counseling, of course, I think, of that, I don't know.
And my question on that is, so, Armando, is the agency working on any kind of facilitation of this process to help local schools? I mean, I'm not aware of the current state of things with the transition, because this is a huge area of concern, the transition.
We do. The transition's huge, Kathy, and where we are right now is trying to start working with school districts around that work. I think that we're a little bit, honestly, behind the eight ball on that one because of staffing and some of the things that have occurred, to be providing more support. But I also know that each individual districts are working on that themselves. Ultimately, that's where the important work occurs. But our work is that coordination, having workshops, having sort of training trainers, and maybe at one other, at a meeting in the next month or two, we could have folks from the common core implementation team come and just do a much better job than I am.
Yeah, well, and I just think it would be helpful information for our commission to have, to understand where, so we're not trying to duplicate efforts.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Okay, 2120-
Well, I have a couple more. Particularly in this piece, I think it's important that the vital results are not, that if there's a visual, it doesn't start with the common core, that there's, the vital results have equal prominence to the content standards, like they do in the Vermont framework, so that they not get lost in this process, and they not be lost in the standards work that takes place in Vermont, by the department or whatever. And then I have just some thoughts around C. If we have approved standards, and A, B, D, and E, I am looking at C, and I don't see why schools can't do C. But there are schools in Vermont where the students do not have choice, and where they do not go to middle and high school in the same district as their supervisory union. And I don't think it matters if we're teaching to the same standards, whether we all teach dinosaurs in first grade, or whether we meet those standards through other things. So I see a redundancy around the coordination of curriculum, which then, there's a whole bunch of work that C drives. And I'm wondering whether C is needed to drive good curriculum work, or whether as a state, we want people to focus on standards rather than specifics of how teachers creatively meet those standards.
And just as a, not in any, sort of along those lines, starting July 1, 2014, all SUs are supposed to have a common curriculum. Not, adjoining SUs, which I think is what Margaret's talking about, a student goes to one school in one SU, and then goes to a different SU, and that's a different, that's going to continue. But I think right now, it will require all SUs to have a common curriculum. When a child leaves that SU and goes to another one, that's where there may be some differences, even though all the standards are the same, so whether they, as Margaret was saying, whether they teach dinosaurs or whales, you know, the standards should be the same, what they use to implement those standards may be different.
Yeah, and I'm saying as a state, I would hope that our focus would be on common standards, which we hold students and teachers accountable to, and which we assess well, not on the specifics of the curriculum. And when C is there, it focuses on everybody about, a lot of work, a lot of teacher time and hours spent on getting on the same page about curriculum, which may be unnecessary. So it drives a lot of work that maybe we don't need to do.
I was just, I'm a little confused because I think I'm hearing two different things, which is, one, that that's not necessarily where we should put our emphasis, and, two, that actually the law says-
The law says that-
Supervisory unions have to do this.
SUs by July 1, 2014, or maybe it was put off, has it been put off to 15? It's still 14. Curriculum, there's a whole bunch of things that they have to have, one of those is curriculum. And I would say that if you speak to someone like Andy, for example, Julie down in Brattleboro, one of the strengths that his school has achieved, the progress, is because there has been that agreement on curriculum. The same standards, but it's that curriculum that has gotten everybody on the same page in the school. So when students go through, the third grade teacher and the fourth grade teacher are using the same language when they're talking about reading, or whatever the math standard. So I think curriculum, as a practitioner, that's what helped me teach, that's what gave me sort of the framework. The standards were above, the curriculum was how I met those standards, and that curriculum then allowed me to implement the activities, or, so I think that it all, it's all coordinated, whether it needs to be in here or not, because the law already requires it, you know, that may be redundancy.
Which law requires it?
153.
153.
153.
Act 153, which is the SU-
Supervisory union.
Supervisory union, yes. Special education, curriculum, contracts, transportation, all these other things.
Okay. And there is some new language added for learning environment that supports daily physical activity.
Yes, and again, so these were, I just simply plunked right in the Health Department recommendations, which were developed with our PE folks at the agency. I think what would be helpful is, and I know it's a lot of words, but I think in some cases, some of these things might belong in a companion document or in best practices. But I do think that there are some pieces in here that could actually get at the rest of it. For example, B, provide students in grades K to 12 with at least 30 minutes of physical activity each day. You could stop there, and then you wouldn't need to have A, which breaks it out by grade, for example.
Well, I guess, oh, sorry, is it-
Is she?
Are P and A different in that the physical activity time is not replaced PE?
Right.
Correct.
That's my question. Because it says a licensed teacher for A.
Yeah, no, that's right. I think A is the actual teaching. The challenge is that K to 12, particularly nine through 12, finding 30 minutes a day of physical activity outside of the PE class, it's next to impossible at a high school, where at an elementary school, recess can be, recess would fill that, right through the middle school, because most middle schools still have recess, where this become, and I think this is, we need to make sure that this occurs. Many schools, many, some schools have canceled recess as a way of more focused instruction, and that's a major component. But they're talking about two different things. One is, and the question that I had is, are these 30, 45 minutes and 40 minutes currently in the, is that the current numbers that are in the-
No, that's what's being proposed.
What's, but there's a current, and I don't know that off the top of my head, there are some current requirements for physical activity, like PE twice a week for-
At least twice weekly, or the equivalent thereof.
Jill, is that the current?
That's what is current.
And is there minutes?
Not secondary, though. It's not secondary, though.
No, that's-
And there were no minutes in, okay.
K to 12, and seven and eight, and then the secondary, secondary, it does say, in grades nine through 12, shall offer the equivalent of at least four years of study in each of the following academic areas, and the last one listed is PE.
Four years?
Four years, currently?
That's what it says.
I thought it said one and a half credits of PE with half a credit of health. So that's the, that's four semesters, so I guess that could be one semester per year.
But not four a year.
Right, because if you take, I mean, South Burlington, one and a half credits of PE and half a credit of health.
Most students try to get it done their first two years of school, and then junior, senior, they don't have a-
Right, but that, I mean, the school can't.
But that's what they can play with, yes.
But it equals four semesters.
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe that's where the alignment is.
You haven't adopted this yet. I mean, I think the two things are that, you know, does this schedule work with the other schedule, which is something we talked about at the very beginning of this? And secondly, there's a lot of detail here that isn't in other sections, so how do we, how do we get to-
Close campus.
How do we get people to do more in this area without detailing it? So with those two questions, we're going to move on and leave that up to you.
And that's good, because we haven't seen this, the commission hasn't seen this language either, so that's a perfect setup for us.
One of the simple ways that we do it in policy, and this goes back to the school boards, is that you have policy, and then you have administrative regs. So your companion book could be where there's details, which you could actually change the details as time changes, and that the policy part-
But what's going to drive the handbook if it isn't spelled out someplace? But they're going to work that out. Yes?
Just C, I know my principal saw that and freaked out. So he's like, close campus, you know, we have over 800 kids, and in lunch, trying to put through, it would be 400 kids, there's two lunches in 20 minutes, like, just, like, he saw that, and was like, I don't know how I'd make that even work. Like, they're-
Do you have a student revolve, or?
Yeah. And some kids even go home for lunch, too. Like, we have some students that live very close to the school, like, so closing completely. Just his eyes bugged out when he saw that, and trying to get the numbers to make that work, and-
And the cost, if you close campus, you have to have somebody overseeing the kids, so there's, that's one that may be a recommendation. And I know that my food service director always wanted to hang me because of the fact that every time I open campus, his number of kids who eat goes down, the prices go up, the quality he can buy. So there are multiple views on this, however, the reality is it would be really hard, particularly in the large schools that may be struggling to find places for the kids.
So disregarding, I'm going through, marking these off, but, I mean, A and B, I would be curious just to know if you folks feel like this is on the right track, because these are two big pieces that, do we want to keep those in, or? Laura's-
I think for B, especially B, maybe A, too, you should separate secondary level from the K to 8, because I just think it's a very different reality, and trying to work that in would not happen.
I think, generally speaking, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, that there's a sense in the board that, you know, that we, as the world has evolved, and there's less physical education, that that probably is not a wise move. So I think the question is, how do we encourage that and get more of that activity, you know, addressing all kinds of issues? Obesity being number one.
Yeah.
But, and, you know, I mean, this, in reading this, and all of a sudden, you see this very detailed page, you know, it doesn't quite go with it, so. But maybe that's what you got to do to- But maybe that's what you got to do to, to accomplish what you're trying to do.
One comment on this.
Otherwise, a math class just takes over for what used to be physical education.
Count jumping jacks.
We can get into geometry number two instead of just, just geometry one.
One quick thing. Think about athletics and whether you want to give credit for that one. And I will duck under the table when I make that suggestion, that you resolve that question.
That question is, and actually, it's a great question, Bill, because that's a philosophically disagree that a sport should count as a PE credit. However, there are ways.
Why, why is that controversial?
It's because it doesn't meet standards. It's, I mean, there's a lot of things. But that may not be a bad little, uh, topic someday to have like a 10, 15 minute. Because there are some things that we allow. If the, if the after-school activity has standards, is taught by a licensed person, they can assess those standards that they're supposed to be meeting. And there are schools, and I think Brattleboro actually is one of those schools, and amongst others, that have aligned an after-school activity with some standards assessment. But in and of itself, it's a loaded question.
It is. I'm very eclectic about the answer, but somebody needs to answer it.
Right now, the answer is no by our state board rules. But I think it's.
Is it?
Yes, you cannot count.
Interesting.
Uh, even though some schools do it, it doesn't, that's been a struggle. So we've sent out some guidance, said if you are, do want to do this, here are some ways to do it.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a class.
It's like a class.
You don't, you never meet, and you write a paper about how, like, playing sports.
And it aligns with the standards, so there's an alignment of some sort. And if the person's not licensed, then somebody with a license has to be take, willing to take that responsibility. But I do think, Bill, this is a, and, well, I know what Carol's. Maybe at some point, we could have Lindsay and, and Donna come and talk about this, because this is not, um, some people really agree with it, some people don't. So it'd be nice to have a sort of a position.
I don't want to make a big deal out of this one. I know what I'm stepping into.
I know. But at least it clarified it.
Let's, let's move on. We've got a lot of territory to cover.
I would add, I, we would be remiss if we didn't get on, well, I would be remiss if I didn't get on my PE soapbox on behalf of folks like Lindsay and explain something that's come up from the agency to these standards, is promoting physical activity, but also integrating technology into the classroom. That there, they seem like these two things that are in opposition, but in fact, they really can be, if used correctly, a really great tool for students. I mean, Lindsay has a grant that she gives out to schools for, um, using heart rate monitors. And so they incorporate heart, these heart rate monitors that are just these wristbands into their PE class. And then they use it to do math, they do statistics, they track their progress. So, so one of the things that I'm trying to work on with them and our technology folks is, can we get any language in here? Can we suggest language to you folks about smart use of technology that doesn't discourage physical activity? You know, student self-regulation, they, you know, they need to know, you know, they don't spend the weekend watching TV, but they can do that.
Where are we moving on to, Jill, here?
I have a quick question to do with the same section, but it's not marked up. It's under B, elementary and middle school students. And it's for you, Armando. It says, "Each school which offers kindergarten shall provide." How many Vermont schools don't offer kindergarten currently?
Handful.
Yeah, huh, six?
I think five or six.
Five is six.
I think, Margaret, but I, I don't, I don't know the exact number. But I know last time I heard, there was a small number, who then they would go to a.
Private kindergarten.
Where they could attend a kindergarten in another community. Uh, but, but you know what? Before I answer that, let me get back to you.
I think this is something that's important, particularly with all the early ed work that's going on, that, um, we understand that, you know, the expectation, I would hope, is that all Vermont students have access to kindergarten. And that schools include kindergarten when we're talking about early ed. So I'm just, I'd like to know a little bit more about why it says, "Each school wish," which, rather than, you know, kindergarten, period. It's an expectation.
Kindergarten is, is not necessarily mandatory for kid. But I think that's a good question.
That's a great question, especially, you know, we have this pre-K bill going through the legislature as well, that's really about continuing that access for preschool. But if, I think probably folks assume that kindergarten is everywhere. And that's a really good.
It's not the case. But I don't think it's pervasive.
And that would be a statutory change, that, but you folks could certainly make that recommendation.
Yes, yeah.
The way the law works right now is that schools have to offer it, but parents don't have to use it. So if a school can offer, you know, a school that doesn't operate a kindergarten, that's the question that I think needs answered. Does that mean, does the community have to pay for kindergarten in another community? I think that's the case. Mark is nodding his head. So the answer is, if your school doesn't offer it, then you're able to go to another community. The problem is, that's not with your peers. I mean, there's a whole bunch of issues with that.
Yeah, there's a lot of issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on to, and I guess this is not in the sequence that we saw last month, on to section 21, 20.6. No suggested changes there? Comments? No?
Where are you?
Where are we?
Hey. Hold on.
Am I, am I in the right sequence?
Um, if you guys don't mind, Annie actually has to leave, but I'd love for her to just take a minute to just say one last thing before she goes, if that's all right.
Goodbye. No, thank you. That's two, or if you shorten them, one. But, no, thank you, this is a very rich conversation. And, uh, and, and nice to see it all on the same page. Thank you very much for your input.
You know, we're losing her on the important part of what the colleges think of what's going to happen with these graduation requirements.
We'll, we'll let her know. We'll let her know what we hear.
Wait. Section 212.6, which, we're, no changes?
Right.
Any comments in that section? Not hearing any. 2220.810, no changes? Next one is libraries, without any changes?
Uh, got a question about libraries. And this gets back to the staffing thing. Is, it seems like the library media staffing thing was deleted, or was it?
We, we started discussing that, yes. In this draft, it is deleted, um, but we only had a small group last time. So I have a feeling the whole group will be discussing that a little bit more. If you want to give us some input on that.
Uh, here's my thinking, is that it is probably the professional support staff that need the ratios more so than classrooms and so forth. So I think that probably for those three or four positions, you need ratios.
Thank you.
Under library, is that where?
Well, under librarian and media, member computer media, computer specials. I, I remember.
I'm talking about something that's up there.
I just remember that discussion.
There is a licensed media person now, they're no longer librarians.
Right.
Bill, can you just say a little bit about why you think that's a area for ratios?
It's quite simple, is the ancillary support staff are the first people that go in a budget cut.
Okay.
And do we need them or do we not? Do we need phys ed teachers? Do we need library media? Do we need nurses, guidance counselors, what have you? And I can see a board in a desperate financial situation saying, "It's not a classroom teacher."
Okay.
So think about it with a group.
Believe me, we're, we're think, we're still thinking about this one a great deal. So, but that's good input. Thank you.
School, facilities and learning environment. Uh, no changes?
You know, you're cheating, because you're using the new ones, so we all have to flip back and forth.
Give us a second.
I am really sorry about that. I'm struggling with how to.
No, no, it's fine, I'm teasing.
I know, but I, I do apologize.
Just to make sure that we're paying attention in a way.
I have it memorized. I should not assume everyone has it memorized.
What number are we on?
We are on, uh, access to current technology, 2120, 8.13, which I do not see.
8.13 or 8. because of facilities? You know, there's, just on the 2120, 8.12, and just looking at B. Design operations, school facilities, compliance with all state, federal, fire, health. We know that doesn't happen. Okay? We know that there are schools, and I, you know, just had a superintendent who was so happy after like his fifth time trying to get a bond vote to meet some of these things. It's not our role. It's really where, you know, the fire marshal and others come in. So there is that little bit of lack of compliance on our end, because we don't have a whole lot of authority without having to call in the, you know.
But how can we say anything but that?
I know, I know, we can't. But I'm just saying that, but, but just remember that from our perspective, we have very little compliant ability to, you know, to force people to do that. We don't have the ability to shut schools down, we don't have the ability to.
You don't?
Not, we don't. I mean, I think that if a fire marshal says there's a, you know, whatever, that, that becomes a, that's their issue. We've had that issue in many situations. Not that, I mean, everybody should be in compliance. And I think people try to be in compliance. But there are times with, when, you know, ADA, for example, seems to be one of those that is, um, is probably the biggest challenge. An old school that all of a sudden needs an elevator or all of a sudden needs a lift or something else. Those are all, I think, challenges, particularly with the age of many of our old schools. I just, I mean, I don't want to hold this up here. This is just, this is, the compliance actually comes from another agency within state government.
But the fire marshal can, or the health department can close down a school.
They can, yes, Bill. That's right. That's what I'm saying, that it's another agency within the.
Understand.
Organization that we would work with or, or talk to or.
But telephone calls have been made and people have shown up.
Yes, yeah. And quite often, that's what a superintendent or school board may need in order to get a bond pass, saying, "You need to fix this or we're going to declare the building unsafe or inhabitable, whatever. Then you have to pay the tuition to wherever people want to go." Doesn't always work that, by the way.
Is this true in F, that we have, that schools have to permanently and forever maintain records?
They have to, yes, there are.
Forever and ever?
Forever and ever. They have to keep transcripts, not every record, just the, the transcript. Mark, do we know that? I mean, off the top of my head, you.
Transcripts forever, and by your board rules, special education records for at least five years from the date of service. I always advise schools to keep their special ed records for five years following the departure of the student. But that's not required.
Right, and health records, do you remember?
Health records is no requirement.
Those is no requirement, okay.
Let me, let me ask you. Would athletics achievements be, be part of these records? And the reason I ask is that I tell my friends often when I ran the mile many years ago, they don't believe me, and I'm trying to find some documentation.
I think in terms of the transcript, all that you're talking.
Mark, we can talk about this later.
The courses taken and grades obtained. I think your mile record.
That was a sub-four-minute mile, I thought, wasn't it?
No, it wasn't, but it was, it was pretty good, and no one believes me, so.
Because they didn't give you credit for athletics.
Yes, that's true. Moving on to, uh, access to current technology. Any comment on that section? No, no changes proposed by the commission? Professional learning, uh, 2120.4. No changes? Staff evaluation?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, on the 411 version, you have a new underline, "Local staff evaluation supervision policies shall be consistent with policies adopted by the Standards Board." I'm just curious as to why this was added at this particular time.
AB, or where are you?
I don't know where I am. I'm on page nine. Page nine of the new copy, in the middle of the page.
Okay. Well, I think that was a, an attempt to reflect the work that's going on right now at the Standards Board to develop, um, not only the new educator standards, but also in partnership with the Task Force for Teacher Leader Effectiveness, that they have to bring back to you folks, um, evaluation policy guidelines and model policies.
Right.
It's not necessary, I suppose, that we keep that in there. But I think it's not only a, an acknowledgement of the work of the Standards Board and the authority that the Standards Board has over this piece, but also, um, essentially pointing folks who are looking at this document to those much more in-depth guidelines that are state guidelines.
I was just wondering if it was an expansion of responsibilities, and you're telling me no.
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Expansion, Bill, of the Standards Board's responsibility? Yeah. I don't know. I don't know.
So it's in them?
And it may be somebody here, I don't know. There may be other folks who know more than I do. Not to put you on the spot, Sherry, um, the, the evaluation guidelines and model, those are not required, but they're recommended, they're best practices. Okay.
Now, the first one, though, the guidelines, was that they were approved by the board.
Great.
So that has more, basically, school districts do need to.
Need to, have to.
Have to by September, uh, 2014.
Okay.
And also to encourage our own schools, that many of them weren't doing it.
I think it's best practice, and we ask that the agency enforce it by, as the school district should submit something to the agency of how close they are or if they're there, uh, if their system aligns to the guidelines.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And how they accomplish it is up to the individual school, however. That goes to your question before, Bill.
I guess my questions are really, really more fundamental and ignorant than I thought. Who in the, who does the Standards Board have the authority explicitly to do all evaluations or supervise all evaluations? Or is that a state board responsibility? I'm just not clear on that piece.
I don't, I mean, I think that, I'd have to get back to you on that, because I think what you're asking is, does the state board, does the Standards Board rules give them that responsibility?
For evaluation of staff, professional and non-professional? Or is that a state board responsibility, or we don't know?
Uh, or statute, it is, I think there's a.
There's a statute on 1752, has the evaluation in it.
Right.
The duties and powers of the Standards Board are in 1694. And I can't answer your question specifically without reading it. Establish standards, including endorsements to which individuals may obtain a license or have one renewed or reinstated. I think this is fairly closely within their purview.
Okay.
I didn't hear the word evaluation in there.
I just, I just took it for one.
It's a question to be researched for.
We should be checking.
But that's a good question, let's find out.
Stacy, did you have your?
Um, yeah, I just have another, I guess, kind of fundamental question. To what extent does, is the commission or, um, I don't know, other members of the, I don't know how it works, in terms of our teacher training programs in the Vermont colleges, how, to what coordination is there in terms of training the teachers to, to come to these expectations? You know, when they come to the job, they know these are the expectations or, is there?
That's a great question, and actually, um, we license, Stacy, the, uh, the ROPA, the Results Oriented Program Approval, which is how teacher training programs get licensed to be able to give a, we do influence. And we have a whole process that is being, I think, reviewed on a, on a fairly regular basis. Colleges don't like that, because you can't be changing their things all the time. Colleges don't like that, because you can't be changing their things all the time, but there are some things, for example, that we will be asking them to do more of. Make sure the common core, that teachers are graduating with at least a common knowledge of that, how to give assessment, maybe S-BAC. We're looking at more training for teachers around bullying, harassment, in, while they're in the pre-service, around the, you know, the whole issue of students, the whole, the whole changing world, that quite often, they experience for the first time, let's say, when they get into a classroom. So, that's a good question, and I think we have to go look at this and align it with ROPA.
Sure, and certainly, we have folks from the agency who are the liaisons to the standards board, and who also staff, you know, our staff who do the evaluations, the results-oriented approval.
Program approval.
Program approval.
ROPA.
They come to every single EQS meeting, they give me feedback ever, after each meeting. I've also presented to the standards board, last month, I believe it was, and this, this document does reflect consistent language and expectations. So they're definitely not only aware of this work, but they've had input, and they are awaiting, anxiously awaiting the results of this, so that they can make sure that that's
That's very encouraging, it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rama Schneider from Williamstown. On the 2120.4, that last sentence, in section paragraph A, "Time for professional learning shall be embedded in the school day." That seems a little over all-encompassing. I mean, and I don't know how much that would infringe upon what you, what is naturally expected of an educator to do, to maintain their licensure, to maintain their job, that might be impinging on contractual relationships.
What, what, what section again, I'm sorry?
Bottom of page eight.
2120.4, section eight. It's page seven of the marked-up version.
Okay.
On page eight of the
A marked-up version.
Yeah, on the marked-up version, it's page seven.
Nope.
The one you got
I'm sorry, Stephen, it's page eight. Eight of Jill's
Yeah, the last sentence, "Time for professional learning shall be embedded into the school day."
Yeah, and I just, you know, I mean, I could probably go on for quite a while, listing problems I see with that, but I'll just leave it at that. I, I, that just seems really so all-encompassing, that it really might be impinging on, on a whole lot of other areas, where teachers should be expected to do some work on their own, to maintain their own professional licensure, there might be contractual agreements. How do you interpret that when they go to summer schooling, for instance? I, I mean, there's a
I, I think that what, you know, Rama was talking about is, is a piece of this, when I read this, "Time for professional learning," it's not meeting their hippy-dippy requirements, or their graduate credit requirements, it's more being able to have teachers observe others' teaching, and that feedback that occurs. So during a prep period, understanding that a prep, prep period is a professional paid period, that can be assigned to this type of work, that, that's how you get it. That's how I think you increase the ability for teachers to share ideas, to, to learn from each other, to all those things. But, Rama, I wasn't interpreting, maybe it needs to be clear, that it's not necessary to meet their individual professional development plan, which is their licensing plan. It could, it could have both, but I think it's really more about that ongoing professional development that occurs while teachers are teaching.
I think he raises a good point, we just need some clarity on it.
Yeah, I think it needs to be clarified there a little bit, and I'm not even sure if we can.
And is it contractual school day, or is it student time? Because I, the way I read that was, in that time between 2:45 and 3:15, or whatever the teacher's contract time, that, you know, that like staff meeting could be used for professional development versus, so I, I was just curious, which, who, what school day?
Before we move on in the, the new draft, what's happened to section 2120.6? I can't find it.
The technology, tech centers?
Tech centers.
It's coming up, I think. If memory serves me, I put that
So it, so it is coming up, eh?
Different section.
I thought it was earlier.
It's on page seven.
Yep.
Under learning environment, I was trying to cluster the learning environment pieces together.
Page seven, so we've already gone by it?
Yeah.
All right, then I'm out of order.
Jill, on the school facilities and learning environment, that's where you, you're, so it's the
Oh, I see, there it is, okay, yep.
But you had something to say about that.
I did, uh, but I'm out of order, because we're beyond it, so I'm going to move on.
I don't think so, I think
It's a little confusing, go for it.
Yeah, go for it.
We'll allow it.
Absolutely.
Well, did you, have you strengthened the language at all from the earlier draft?
No, this is a piece, this has kind of been in the parking lot, if you will. We definitely know, we have a couple folks from tech centers on the commission, they've asked if we could strengthen this up, and I know that was a request of yours as well.
Just, I mean, I think I'm only speaking for myself, maybe for other members of the board, there's a sense out there that not all Vermont children have equal access to the tech centers.
Yep.
And I guess I, I personally would like to make sure that these, these guidelines are going to ensure that.
Okay.
Completely, and we've talked about that, however, right now, the law, the federal law says that in order to be a tech center, and to receive tech center funding, you must X, Y, and Z, and, and Bill, or Mark at some point can fill us in on that, but that's what we would like, and, and I'm actually going to use your school as an example, not because you're there, but because it's a good example. Four years ago, when the Cisco system, when you guys started that Cisco system, years and years ago, Pat, and, and at the time, I don't know who the superintendent was, wanted to have that be a tech center, so the kids can go there, access the Cisco system. They could not access tech center dollars in Perkins, because they weren't a tech center. And it's not state law, there's some federal, so I think that we need to get to where you're getting at, and, and mark a bill, at some point, we need to look at that, how that language changes. The other piece is a more mundane, actually, is, right now, there is language that says that there is, there should be no, what, students should not have their access to technical education blocked. And we can write whatever laws we want, but there are things that may occur at the site, the school level, whether it's scheduling, or being talked out of going there, or financially, so I think that, I don't know if we can strengthen it any more than the current law already says, that you cannot deny access to tech, tech education to kids, but there are other things that can sort of impede that. So that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, it's more mundane, but I think that it's also one of those things that is a reality, and different in every situation. Particularly if you're a school board member, and you budgeted for 20 kids going to a tech center, and all of a sudden you get 100 show up, that, and you are required to pay it, that blows up your budget. Burlington and Essex, about 15 years ago, had that same situation, and went to the Supreme Court, and the state Supreme Court said you must pay, even though you had only budgeted for this amount, but the budget, the, the bill came $250,000 more expensive. So those are the things that I think local boards struggle with, administrators struggle with, not trying to deny kids' access, but there are some, and one of the things that we've talked about at the 90,000-foot level is, you take tech center tuition out of the local budgets, and have it come from the state, so that there's no, the money doesn't become an issue of saying, "Steven, I'd love for you to go, but you know what, you're the, you know, you're five kids over the ones that we budgeted for," and I think any of you who are on school boards, that's a real issue. So if we can remove that obstruction of the funding, that would be huge, but that's not our place, that's across the street's place. That's a good point.
Okay. Let's move on to graduation requirements.
We got state and local comprehensive assessment right before that.
All right, I was trying to move things along here, and trying to Comments on state and local comprehensive, comprehensive assessment system?
In B, I would suggest inserting the word, "All proficiency standards," I wouldn't expect we would assess students on the fire marshal's investigation, which is also a standard.
Say that again, Bill, so we all can
B, "I shall assess students in all learning proficiency standards as approved by the state board." We wouldn't assess them in all these other standards that we're passing.
And I have a comment around C. It says, "The performance criteria of the system should be clear and be communicated." So, there are clear performance criteria for certain standards, and there are multiple options for meeting performance criteria. There's a lot that's left to be locally developed, and I think that's fine, that it's left to be locally developed, but what happens when there's local development of those aspects of a comprehensive assessment system, is there's not always commonality of standards amongst them. So, a performance portfolio exhibition project may have varying degrees of expectation, place to place. So if this is going to say, "Performance criteria of the system shall be clear," how does that apply to non-standardized test standards? That's just a question. Yep.
And just again, the red herring, standards approved by the board, so, in A, or, sorry, in A1.
Yep.
So again, just, as a teacher, we just really need to be clear about what those standards are, too. I just, we keep seeing that language over and over in the document, just want to point that out again, because just as a teacher, I mean, I'm common core, I'm in frameworks, I'm vital results, whatever it is, we keep saying the standards approved by the board, but we don't really have a clear vision of what that is. And, I mean, maybe that's another working day, that we actually go through and really look at, what are those standards?
Actually, the PowerPoint on the last page does in fact say what all those multiple standards are, are actually the
But how do you make that digest?
But it still raises your fundamental questions of, these things can contradict each other.
They don't contradict each other.
They do.
And that's what we have to resolve. And we're going to hit that when we see graduation requirements on the next section, because it's going to hit us right in the face.
Yep.
Nice segue, Bill. Let's go to graduation requirements.
But I do think, at some point, Margaret's question has a really important question, though, that doesn't need to be talked, discussed, or answered right now, but I think that's, you know, that's, that's a, that's a big elephant in the room, if you will, because it can be so different in every school.
Yep.
So that, at some point, maybe during our work
Well, it, it seems to me it's a role that the department can play in terms of convening. For example, in New York, there's the State Performance Assessment Consortium, that has helped develop those common standards and expectations for work in content areas, but also in areas around the vital results, through performance assessment. So there is a way to do it, and I see the department's role in convening, and bringing people together to get on the same page as that. I think that for us to send a message that these standards, like the vital results, are important, but you go figure out how to do it, whereas the standards in language arts are really important, and we're going to test them with this national test. I think there's such, such different messages to teachers, and I think the way education is moving, we want to see demonstration of learning, and we want to see that in multiple ways, not just through the standardized tests. So it's the way, the messages we send through this will then translate to what teachers actually do. So I think it's really important.
And I'd love to continue that conversation, because one of the things that, you know, the, one of the ways that we recommended to the feds, to allow for multiple measures that align to the standards, not just on a, a test, was to come up with, in every content area, in every grade that is assessed, three through eight, and grade 11, with a pool of thousands of questions that are aligned to the standards, that then teachers could then pull from those questions, guaranteed they're all aligned to the standards, even though Stephen's test may be different than my test, depending on which questions I grab, you know, that then align, then we could assure the feds that, not only do we have the state assessment, or the, or the S-BAC assessment, but we also have local assessment that is aligned to the standards, and that the questions come from a pool of questions developed by Vermont, and all the other states that are in, in that S-BAC, to, to assure that. So that gives teachers more, at least a clearer picture of what it needs to be in there. Now, that never, that didn't happen, but those are the type of things that I think, as this evolves over the years, whether it's next year, five years, 10 years from now, these are the, the evolutionary, one, one way that this could evolve, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, who knows?
I don't, I don't necessarily think it's an evolution, although it is, could be an evolution, but I think Vermont did this with portfolios, for example. We had a system that assessed performance, that was agreed to by Vermont educators for portfolios, for math, and for literacy. This is superseded now by standardized tests. However, I think we do have, if we're clear about our standards, and can look at how performance assessment fits into those standards, particularly around the vital results, we can develop a rigorous performance criteria that we all agree to, which elevates the importance of those, that demonstration of knowledge to equal what is shown on a standardized test.
In place of the S-BAC?
Oh, well, I'd go there, but obviously, I'm one person.
The philosophical contradiction you're pointing out here is
Yeah.
That we're adding, we're not really resolving the contradiction,
No.
We're embracing both sides of the contradiction.
Yep.
Is that we're saying we're going to
Not quite sure I understand, embracing both sides, Bill, you've lost me.
It's the message it sends to teachers. For example, when the message says, "Co-ordinate curriculum," there's a lot of teacher time coordinating curriculum, and reaching those agreements around, we're all going to do dinosaurs or whatever, right?
Right.
Do we want them to spend that valuable resource of their time on that? Do we want them to focus on student learning, and demonstration of student learning? Does it matter if it's dinosaurs or whatever? It's the standards that matter. How do they demonstrate understanding of the standards? So, in our language, we have to be really clear, because what then works in a school, removed from this, and what then impact teachers' time, is really, really important. And, and I do think we have to clarify this, this issue, we can't do both.
I agree.
So which one do we want?
And that leads us to graduation requirements,
Yeah.
Which is our segue, because that's exactly the conflict between the first two paragraphs, A and B.
Yeah, in, in E, it says, "Students may receive credit for learning that takes place outside the school, the school day, or the classroom."
Yeah.
So that's a real conflict with what we talked about earlier.
Which is
I'm very supportive of that. When you look at the system New Hampshire's developed, with ELOs, Extended Learning Opportunities, it's very good, very promising, for students to be able to receive credit for work they do, maybe with a local hospital, to write up their learning, there's a lot of promise, and to gain credit for it. We're, we're speaking out of both sides of our mouths in this.
I guess I don't agree with that we're speaking out of, I think that, that aligns very clearly with standards. If, if the standards are, and can be met by doing an internship, and this, and it can be documented, then it does. And, and, so I don't think that
But then you said with the PE, they couldn't, you know, how does that?
PE is, that's a little, that's a little different, because that's an athletic, that's a very specific athletic, that's not, if it's aligned to stand, no, Margaret, if it's aligned to standards, we said you could do it, if you could align it to the standards, and you could have an assessment that aligns to those standards, then you could do it. So I don't see this as a contradictory, I see this as an evolution of what we used to call PE and F for activities, and how do you balance the two of them? But that's, you know, I don't know if this is, maybe that's something that the committee can go back and look at a little bit more.
Yeah.
I think it's very important, because if a person could show by flexible pathways of proficiency, which was in the S-BAC, in alternative ways, would that person be excused from taking the S-BAC?
No, every student still has to take the S-BAC.
Well, there's the contradiction.
It's not a contradiction, I don't quite understand
Of course it is.
The contradiction, the contradiction that you're, you're finding, because a student can meet, has to take a, an assessment that is aligned to the standards, while still being able to meet those standards, in the, the classroom standards, in the classroom, because the standards of the S-BAC is, is sort of assessing, not every standard, obviously, it can't assess them all, so I think that this is just a checking in to make sure that those things have occurred.
So is there a cutoff on the S-BAC?
There will be a cutoff, I don't know what the cutoff is.
And will that be tied to graduation?
Nope. We have chosen as a state not to align standardized assessment to what's called high-stakes testing, where kids don't graduate. Other states have, and we were, I was just talking in that conversation with Rama, that those, many of those states have then lowered the cut score, because they're having too many kids not graduating. So what we want to do is, we don't want to make any single measure, like a standardized assessment, the gate that somebody has to get through in order to graduate.
But I'm just going to weigh in here, because in, in the, especially in the 11th grade, we have, you know, really, really proficient students sitting on the, the state board, on the local school boards, and they tell me time and again, their friends don't take the test seriously.
Right.
And so there's no, if there's no weight, or there's no meaningful, relevant reason to take that for the student
Current, the current test, the current test. We're not talking about S-BAC, because when you look at S-BAC colleges, and if you had Tim Donovan here, he would talk about, he's been part of our EQ, of our New England Secondary School work, the New England colleges have all agreed that they will incorporate S-BAC in some way into the application process. It may take over the place of SAT or ACT someday. I doubt that, but it could be another component. So there will be a meaning to the S-BAC instead than just a graduation requirement. Because right now, you're right, Sharmer, I mean, I've, hey, I've worked in, you know, high schools for years, kids weren't taking it seriously. They were taking it seriously to a certain point, but if it became too challenging, they wouldn't do the rest. Other kids were blowing it off. At the 11th grade, that didn't maybe happen in the other grades.
So you're actually, so I'm just going to reflect something back to you. So when you say that the colleges, state and otherwise, are going to incorporate the S-BAC, we also have the statistic that the students in poverty go on to college far less than any other group of students, and we have a very low on-to-college, whatever the percentage is.
Continuation, yeah.
So, I, I still see a disconnect, because you're now saying the S-BAC will be taken seriously at the college level, but we're still not going to use it as any benchmark, except to grade the schools in, in the school. So I still see a disconnect between, you can meet some standard that is here, but you can take the S-BAC only because it's required, because we say it's required. But there's no consequences to it. You don't get held back, you don't graduate, you don't have to take it again, you know, so there, that's where I see the disconnect, that it doesn't seem relevant to what we're doing, if it doesn't mean anything except to the school.
But once you do high-stakes assessment, and start attaching that, then you're welcome to Atlanta, you get all kinds of perverse incentives.
Well, I'm not even going there.
I'm giving you an example of, as a student, perhaps I want to demonstrate my understanding of Algebra I through a through a exhibition and a presentation that I have created through, in an automotive math class. Maybe I want to demonstrate my knowledge that way because maybe I do better showing what I know and am able to do that way than on a standardized test. If I can demonstrate my knowledge that way, I should be able to have that choice. Right now, I'm only able to have that choice if I'm on a special education plan, rather than, I should have that choice in my personal learning plan. I should be able to demonstrate my knowledge in multiple ways. I shouldn't have to demonstrate my knowledge with this standardized test as my only option that counts.
Well, I, I think, I think this board is on record of agreeing with that philosophy.
Right. So there's.
But we don't have that latitude.
Can I just?
Am I, am I correct?
Yes. I just want to be really clear though that.
What waiver, with the word waiver meant in, in, in Washington DC did not mean the same thing, at least at this table, if not in the whole, whole state of Vermont.
I think there's some long-term promise.
Am I right about that? I mean, we don't have that.
I don't know.
It's a federal requirement. There's a federal law that says we have to assess kids with either a, with either S-BAC or with an assessment that is aligned with the Common Core standards and is as rigorous as the other two assessments, so.
So a, a performance assessment could be that. I mean, in.
No, it cannot.
In New York, in New York, they, performance assessment.
It doesn't have to be standardized.
One on a time here, please.
Yeah.
Margaret as a floor.
They have, they, in New York, the Performance Assessment Consortium has, those students in those schools do not have to take the Regents because that performance assessment has been equaled or ratified or approved as equivalent to the Regents.
But we're talking about another test there. We're, we're, we're talking.
No, we're not talking about a test. We're talking about demonstration of knowledge.
But you're talking about is New York state requirement as opposed to a federal requirement. We're not talking.
But if they, if they can meet the federal.
At least what I know from talking to commissioners just recently, they're taking, uh, I think they're a park state. Um, and they're going to be using park as their standardized assessment. I haven't heard of anybody being uh waived from taking that assessment as a result of how they did in their Regents. I haven't heard that, Margaret, but maybe, because if that's the case, then the whole thing crumbles nationally.
Right, right.
And I don't believe that it should crumble. I think that there should be something standard. And again, it's not a nas, I want to correct folks. I've said it a couple of times, it's not national standards or national assessments. These are, states developed these standards, and Vermont was an integral part of developing these standards. And Vermont was also an integral part of, of working with the S-BAC. So these are things that we decided were important to have nationally. Whether we all agree with it, now, that's a different story.
So in, just in terms of this, for you guys, I'd look at this issue of demonstrates proficiency, which you use it a lot. So what you mean by that? And that receive credit for learning outside of school, how, how do you do that? What's the system for making that happen?
Sure, and I would just point out B on the top of page 10, the flexible pathways paragraph. I mean, we specifically do say that students need to demonstrate learning through flexible and multiple pathways. They have to be allowed to demonstrate proficiency by presenting multiple types of evidence. We really were trying to get at just that. The only time in the graduation requirements that the word assessment is used is under the local comprehensive assessment system. We really tried to make this document not about students having to take standardized tests or, or demonstrating proficiency on those to graduate. It's much more about the values and the things that we think all students should have as a state. And then it still is up to the local board to, um, to set requirements for graduation. So I think in order to do a, a standardized test as a graduation requirement would have to be probably a statutory thing, but we really stayed away from that.
And I'm really supportive of that. I'm just hopeful that this can drive a support system that helps people get on the same page of what demonstrating understanding means and is rigorous.
Okay, Stacy.
I'll be real quick. I just hope that we don't expect students to arrive in ninth grade knowing how to demonstrate knowledge in a variety of ways. So I think we have to start looking at this in kindergarten and first because I think what ends up happening is that, that a lot of them, they, they get that one assessment built up and they arrive in ninth grade and we say to them, now you should think outside the box. And they don't, they don't know how to do that. So if there's some language about, students are expected to gain these skills of demonstrating knowledge in multiple ways throughout elementary school.
Okay, um. So I'm looking at graduation requirements, pages nine through 11. Other comments? There were no changes proposed on, on those pages?
I just have a quick question about, do we have the authority to make benchmarks for 10th grade in one subject but not others? And it just is one of those things that keeps ticking out.
What, what section are you referring to?
It's the math.
On, yeah, page 10, C, math. I've been calling around to every single math teacher, math coordinator I know and talking about this. And it's so interesting because if you follow Common Core, they actually have all this before 10th grade. So algebra is in eighth grade. And so ninth grade is geometry, 10th grade is algebra II. So that's if you follow Common Core. So I don't understand, if we're saying we are adopting Common Core and that's one of the three standard, four standards that we have and we've adopted, which is, you know, different than Vermont frameworks for math anyways, but if it's Common Core, if they follow that, they actually have those math classes by ninth grade.
I didn't think that that was the case, but I'll have to, you know, we'll have to check. I'll talk to Mike over.
Yeah, so it looks like, because in eighth grade, it's algebra a little bit watered down. 10th grade geometry and then, or sorry, ninth grade geometry, 10th grade algebra II, which is some of the harder concepts from Algebra I's been put in Algebra II.
All right, so we'll ask the commission to, to, to look at that.
Again.
They should be okay. If they're taught earlier, that's not a problem. It's when they're taught later, they would be the problem.
But I don't think that we align with what.
It's a fair question. Does it align with Common Core?
Right.
Our actual practices.
That's, that's what we want to know.
Is what I think you're talking about.
Can I ask something?
Yes, Stacy.
Sorry. Um, just, I was pretty moved by IBM's presentation last week and the governor's and, and I, I, it's funny for me, I'm very split between the personalized learning plans and those benchmarks. I don't know if other people are feeling that way, but I, you know, I just like, I can think of courses I took in college because I was required to. I never would have taken it. I loved them, they expanded my, you know, world. So I'm feeling kind of conflicted and I just was wondering, did, did, I was kind of wondering amongst the board, were we comfortable with the, including the concepts of algebra, geometry? To be like that language, do people want stronger? I don't know, I think, I, I feel a little conflicted myself between including concepts of, because I think I could have had a very nice time in high school, avoiding math entirely and just finding some way to incorporate the concepts. But I'm not sure that would have been good for me.
I think we've all individually gone through a process and, and maybe gotten comfortable with this. Maybe not everyone is in complete agreement.
Actually, I'm comfortable with this math language.
Yeah, I'm much more comfortable with the current math language than with the prior math language.
It's morphed, Stacy.
And do people care about the grade? Like having that grade in there?
Well, let's, let's, let's wait and get, get the answer to your question at the next meeting and we can have that discussion. I'm, it's not going away. I don't need you to market, I know it's going to come up.
So in, under D?
Uh huh.
The personalized learning plans that are being talked about across the street, they're from kindergarten on?
Well, yes and no. The Senate, the Senate passed kindergarten on. The House Ed changed it to seventh grade. You're spoiling my whole legislative report later.
All right. So I guess in many, many places, sixth grade is the beginning of middle school, whether you're in a middle school or in the middle level concept. And if we are going to do personalized learning plans and get students starting to think before high school, I think that seventh grade is actually too late. I think that maybe sixth grade, fifth or sixth grade is where the real sort of middle level thinking starts. And I just think that six, I mean, I've seen over the years, people, schools, including fifth and sixth grade in middle school. So I, I guess my suggestion is to possibly lower that.
You're looking at D on page 10?
I would agree.
There's still language, if I, it keeps changing, but I believe there's still language with a K6 focus on PLPs, but, but more about learning outcomes.
And the process.
And the process. And that fifth and sixth grades, you're absolutely right, Sharmri, that in, that's when the process of, I, and maybe not as formalized, let's say, as, as another, as a high school PLP, but where students are getting exposure to careers, to interest, areas of interest that they may have. But we were a little concerned about a PLP in first grade was a little bit too, so then there was this kind of back and forth. There's still something in there, but not as specific as the middle high school on. And you're right, I mean, in some places, middle school is fifth grade on. In other places, it's seventh grade, um, depending on, or sixth grade. It all depends on the individual school.
So if you have a K8, you might want to start thinking about it in fifth or sixth grade.
That's right, that's right.
So I'm just saying that I, personally, I would lower that if we're actually putting grades in.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree as well.
I could go for the earlier grade, but I could also go for something like third grade, which is the end of what's considered a basic skills block.
Right, right. And that's been the, that's the, you know, that's exactly where we've been sort of talking about.
On page 10, section D, we're asking you to reconsider the age.
Yep.
I don't want to reconsider before it goes to Senate because right now it's on House Ed and it's going to be going over at some point. And I don't want to, you know, I think that's where we might have some of those, another opportunity to have that conversation with folks.
So question mark here.
Well.
What do you think, Jill? I mean, I don't know, this is.
Wait a minute, let me, we're a state policy organization and I think we are, we have the freedom to, to make our, our, our decision and, and represent our, our thinking to the legislative process if that's, if that's where the issue is.
True, but I think what we want to make sure is it's aligned to the legislative, the language, that's what I'm talking about. Trying to get that alignment.
Yes.
So we could influence them.
Yes, yeah, I agree, I agree with all of them.
And fourth grade.
Excuse me?
Be, I would suggest that it's a fourth grade up and that we represent that to them so that they know we're supportive of that.
Which actually lines up with the statute that says that all students must be reading proficiently at third grade, which then jumps that up to the next level.
Yeah.
It might be a, a bit ironic now, but I testified on S-130 in the House Ed a week or two ago. Bill was passed the Senate with these plans being developed at kindergarten through 12th grade. And the committee had changed it to seventh grade to 12, and I went on record saying the State Board of Education favored the kindergarten start.
Well, there you go. Well, you were right.
You were right.
So I could make a suggestion, I know we're running over our time. This section, reporting of and compliance with, this, you'll see it's, it's over two, it's almost two pages of new language, but this was language that was just given to me yesterday. The, um, the EQS Commission had asked myself and our facilitator, David Ruth, Ruth, to come up with a way of sorting out the reporting by audience. So this hasn't been run by the Commission either. And it's, on the grand scale of things, it's relatively innocuous. It's more just what thing, you know. So if you're interested, we could just skip this and we'll.
Why don't we wait and see where your commission has come down before we, we weigh in.
On that new section. In terms of continuous improvement plan, right now it says it should be developed with the involvement of school board members, students, teachers, administrators, parents, and other community members. But it doesn't say how often. And then it says it should be reviewed by educators at least annually. So I can see that, you know, educators would review, revise, and, and do it annually. But how often will it be, will a large community process take place? It seems like that's a, I'm supportive of that happening, but I think if you don't say it should be every three years or five years, that people could just keep rolling over the one they've got forever.
Blow off the dust on the shelf.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll go over to variance, 2121.
And I'm wondering if you folks are interested in changing that to the word waiver or something instead, variance.
Our own word waiver?
It seems to be a lot of confusion what the word waiver means, so I'm not sure we want to use it.
Wave running.
You call it exceptions.
Any other, the last few sections in those two remaining pages, there were no proposed changes? Any comments, Margaret?
I have a comment. It's to do with this review, secretary's recommendations. And I, I see an opportu, it is the third thing down. It's on page 14 over to 15. It's one, two, and three.
Yes.
Specifically three. I see an opportunity here for peer learning and peer review of the standards in action. So I, I, I think it is, particularly three is, is very narrow. There could be school to school peer review of how schools are meeting the quality standards. And there could be feedback and communication which would benefit all schools. So I don't necessarily think the secretary needs to be involved in all those, but I think the department does. And I think it could be way more than 10 schools. And I think it would be a valuable peer. There's an opportunity in this section to drive the standards, I think, in a, in a positive way.
Bill.
I like that, Margaret, and I think playing with something like that's a good idea. The, I'm worried about capacity and this gets into your same question at the bottom of page 14. The agency will conduct a review of all schools and review each annual qual, each educational quality report. And I'm thinking to myself, oh, my goodness, good luck with that because it could degenerate into a very standardized road paper process, that, because it could degenerate into a very standardized road paper process, stamp the forms, and the people looking at it here would get very mechanical in their application, and so would the schools in terms of what they sent you. And so I think that may be not a good method, and something like a visiting team or something to make qualitative judgments would be indicated. And I think, another thing that's here is, I raised this last time, but I'm not sure, and maybe there's something I'm not seeing, is what if we find the agency's going to randomly identify eight to 10 schools a year? Well, what about the schools that are in serious trouble, that really there's something really needs attention and an intervention of some sort is necessary? There needs to be a mechanism for that to happen.
Those two different things, though?
Yeah, I mean, what this is trying to assure is that all Vermont schools submit the report annually, and the agency reviews them, and then in addition to that, there would be these secretary visits. And again, this is just a proposal, we haven't spent a lot of time on this.
I don't think they mean secretary personally, I think they mean a team going in.
Yeah, right. And it does say on number one on the bottom of 14, the agency staff with assistance from other Vermont educators as required and desired, I think to get at just what you folks were expressing concerns about. I think I would just say anecdotally from the agency, we tend to know what the schools would be, and we would, this information would only shore that up, and then there's certainly, and this is statutory language, a great deal of authority that the Secretary and the Board have to involve themselves if they feel that a school continues to not meet the standards.
And 2122.1's the statutory language.
I think it's also a learning opportunity, though, to not just focus on, for schools to look at how other schools are meeting, particularly this demonstration performance, for example. That's something that people are doing in lots of different ways. So a peer review where people go and look at how schools are meeting the standards in creative ways, and then they'll get ideas, and they'll give ideas, and it could be that as well as this.
And I also think, I mean, that sounds wonderful to do that. I think that becomes difficult because people have to be out of the classroom, but that is the way that people learn. But I want to go to Bill's point. There are, there'll be two, there'll be this list of schools randomly selected, but then there'll also be the priority schools, the focus schools, the schools that have been identified, I think that you were saying that really needed some, that needed some support, some intervention by.
Under current Nickelby-type criteria are because we know that things are running afoul.
Well, we're going to be using the criteria that we have. We use right now graduation rates, high school continuation rates, kneecap scores, and that whatever comes next in the reauthorization will also drive what, how we identify. But I think right now, what the Secretary, what the federal government is saying, too many schools were identified, and there's no way that a state can support schools. So what they focus is on, you know, those schools that are really the most in need, using whatever criteria the state feels they can use, not aligned specifically to one test. You want to look at multiple things. So there's, there is a different, I guess I'm just trying to point out that schools that may be in need of more support from either us or teams of people are separate from these eight to 10.
Right, and we have our existing state accountability system.
And we have a current state.
Not within these rules, but.
In the statute.
Is it within rule, within state rule? I know there's statutory language that allows it or requires it, but I was just wondering, there are times in which you need to go look at something.
Yeah, and it does never stops us any time we feel, just like as a principal, you know, you walk by a classroom and you see something, it doesn't matter that you had an evaluation two weeks ago, you can go right in and deal with that. So the same thing applies here. And what we're doing now is we're lowering our N number, which is right now, any, we're using the, and have been for years, using 40 as N, meaning the number of kids that have to be in any one subgroup that could be counted towards accountability. That's now coming down to the number's 13, which would then allow for many of the small, particularly very small schools that have not been able to be identified, to be now part of the, of that system.
Okay, on to the last section, further review, Secretary's recommendations, no proposed changes since the last meeting. Is this authority that now exists?
That's right.
Yes. And we try not to choose number four. We could, but have never chosen to go that route. And even three, we've only taken administrative control of a small portion of the area. That's really all. We don't have the ability to take over an entire district. If it had to do with, you know, a particular section, that's what we would be taking over. Mexico is a perfect example of that. MVU, years ago, we went over and took over a slice, not over the school, but a slice of their school improvement work. In Springfield, we're going in there and looking at, again, a slice of their school improvement, and there are a couple of other districts that we're looking right now that we may want to take, have a little bit more authority over that section of the, of the school operations, if you will.
Bill?
Hate to bring this one up, too. This is another one of those I put on the table and duck under it. But you talk about independent schools here, and in reading my earlier version, there were three or four references to independent schools, and there's reporting schools, and there's independent schools, and there's people who play by the Nickelby rules and those that don't. I just got confused as to the consistency of the rules and their application. And myself is, if you're taking public money as a means of funding your school, that makes you a public school, and to me, these regulations should apply.
That's not how we.
It's incredibly controversial kind of thing, and there's legislation in play on this issue, but that's how I view it, and it's maybe one of those things that the State Board should take a position on.
Right now, we look at that, our position is it's an independent school, the fact that they take state dollars still makes them an independent school. Whether, whatever I feel personally is another story, but this is the professional and my position as a Secretary. The legislation, I think we'll talk a little bit about later, Bill, I think Jill's going to do a short update on, and you could talk specifically where this, that in the miscellaneous ed, I think what you're.
Yeah, we will. That's quite, watch the, watch what's happening this hour, because it's going to be different the next hour.
It may be.
Any other comments on the last section? Thank you. We, despite all our wisdom and suggestions, we do appreciate all that you've gone through to get here. So will you come back with another draft in May, and then we'll finally see you on this in June?
That's right.
Can I make one request or consideration of the Board? I think a process like this, I mean, this morning was enormously valuable. We did something like this with the statewide Board of the School Boards Association, and I raised the proposal at our last meeting that all the constituencies that are represented on this Commission be expected to conduct some kind of conversation like this with their, or some representative group of their constituency. And I wonder whether that's something the Board would consider sending back. I don't know how you'd want to phrase it, but I just think this morning's a good example of what comes out of these. I think unless we get everybody working together, there's potentially the opportunity to just distance ourselves, you know, or any particular group. And I think if we could all conduct these kinds of sessions, it would be enormously valuable, and I think to the benefit of this rule in the end, so.
Well, Bill?
As part of the rule adoption process, we have to have some certain number of public hearings anyway, and sometimes these are done by staff. I'm wondering if the Board should be there, or representatives of the Board should be there for those public comment sessions?
Well, which ones are you talking about? The ones that are going to be involved in the rule process, or what's being proposed?
Well, I'm open to both notions.
The only hesitate, I think it's a great idea, and I guess I would encourage the EQS Commission to proceed with that in the short time that's left. Anything we can do to assist, we'd be more than happy to do. I'm going to be pretty eager in June, you know, this is an eight-month process after we get your final report. In June, if I have the votes, I'm going to be pretty eager to move on and get this process started. So I would hate to see any delay in that timeframe.
We vote in June basically to start the rules-making process, which requires hearings thereafter.
Right, yeah. But we will be working from a draft that we've approved at that point.
Right.
So I think it's a great idea, and, but I don't, I mean, we could pass a motion if you want, but I really think it's up to you guys to, you know, as you've already started, to take charge of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Thank you, Harry. Thank you. Kathy, thanks. Thanks, Jill.
Maybe I'll come back.
Thank you. We're not scheduled for 12:15.
Do you have, Stephen, the thing, we have, I'm not sure if somebody's coming for the J. I think Special Ed Rules Part B and C.
We've got other things here.
Okay.
Bill?
Oh, yes.
Can you give us your, can we go over the budget?
Yes.
Take you out of order?
Good.
Am I out of order again?
Yep. So let me, either, before Bill gets started, are there members of the public that wish to be heard? Bill, would you step aside for a moment? Yeah.
I apologize.
Thank you, Bill.
I thought I was out of order.
Thank you, and I'll be very, very quick, so you can get on with Bill. My name's Rama Schneider, I'm from Williamstown, and I'm here to talk about something real, very briefly, that is an educational issue, and that is gun control, firearms control. We are currently around Vermont. We are spending money, time, and effort on hardening our schools, turning them into bunkers. We are sending our kids through school safety drills, which in some cases literally terrorize the kids with some of the things they're hearing about what to, what they have to do in the case of a school lockdown. We are doing this as a direct result of firearms violations, firearms violence, mass shootings. This is not about people attacking other people with blunt instruments, knives, or any other such nonsense. This has nothing to do with mental health, this has to do with firearms. It is costing us tens of thousands of dollars. It is costing hours. And I had to sit there and look at teachers as they explained to parents that in the case of a school lockdown, if a young child, and we're talking about elementary-age kids, if a young child is not in a classroom and that school goes into school lockdown, that young child has to fend for themselves, because the teacher cannot open their door and put at risk all the kids behind a locked door. This is not good, this is not healthy. It is not healthy for the students, it is making us spend a whole lot of money on noneducational issues that we have no control over. This is not an issue that is at all driven by the educational community, literally, yet we are having to spend money on it. And worst of all, we're having to terrorize our kids over this issue. I don't know how much or what you folks feel that you can do. I am bringing up the issue because I think it is very important. On the money issue, I would just really urge that when you talk to the legislature, that you explain to them that we need to find some way to get some funds to deal with this that are not considered educational funds. This should not be going on the property tax. This is, this has come about simply because we have legislators that refuse to do anything for whatever reasons whatsoever. In the long run, hopefully, we can get to the point where a child does not have to be told that they cannot feel safe at school, walking in that door. You know, that's going to be a long, hard path, and that's going to be some policy decisions that have to be advocated for. I don't have specific suggestions. I thank you for listening to that, and hope you'll just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In your packet, you got an update from Bill on where we stand with the Board budget.
If you look at the sheet with the print, it's hard to read, the small font, in the bottom right corner is, so this is where you stand as of March 31st, with three-quarters of the year gone. You have expended 87% of your budget, so that's more than three-quarters of the budget. And I tried to do a little analysis on the backside by removing some of the one-time expenditures. You paid your dues in full upfront, so that, and you're still a little over, but working with Carol, we think you'll probably be all right. The state accounting actually is a cash accounting, even though its financial statements are converted to look like modified accrual. The retreat in June will probably not get paid until July, so we're only having one more meeting to pay for, or a lot of those expenses won't be, so it'll be close. The good news is that your budget is a subset of the Secretary's budget, and if you're nice to him, he may help us float you to get you through the end of the year.
However, I think when we, when we look at this issue next, next fall, late fall.
We need to look at.
Pardon me, we need to look at this a little more closely. I think this budget probably hasn't been increased in a number of years, and.
Carol was telling me certain costs have gone up that you can't control.
Right.
So we should talk about it some more.
But the thing is, if it's part of our budget, and we've been told to have a level-funded budget, I'm understanding that I can't support increasing your budget at the expense of the Agency's budget. So I think those are where the rubs will come in. And we need to start looking at, is this the appropriate place to have our meeting, where we're paying whatever it is every time we come here? We have a room much smaller than that in our 302, which could be used, it would be a lot smaller, the cavern, but.
It might be interesting to try a board meeting there, to see how it works.
Is there a room there with windows? Because that room has no windows for all day.
The only windows, I think the only couple people have windows, and that's.
Yeah, up in the front of the building and some along the side, but.
It's a little hairy, so it's a supermarket.
Skylight somewhere, but not in that room, no.
No skylight?
No, nothing.
In fairness, just to get it on the record, and in the minutes, this budget, this Board did review its budget when the, there was a change in the agent, from the Department to the Agency, with your assistance.
Yes.
Prepared a budget, presented it to the Administration, and it was dismissed because we were told that whatever funding we needed would come out of the Agency. So, I mean, just, I want to make sure that some of the new Board members understand that, and that we did try to be responsible and reviewed this situation earlier, and was told that the world was going to say the same, and the Agency would continue to fund us as the Department had.
But I do think that as a Board, now a Board member, even though I'm not a voting member, that we need to, we should be looking at this. Is it appropriate to be going to, to be part of NASB, for example? That's a $22,000 expense. Is it appropriate to go to out-of-state travel that may, you know, and those are all things that I think as a Board we have to look at. I do believe that NASB, at the very least for another year, would be valuable.
Well, we've paid, and so we're in for.
We're paid for next year, Bill?
We're paid for the current year, um, yes.
Which goes through.
June 30th.
Only June 30th.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
So again, and I don't, I don't say we should get out of it, but I think that those are the type of questions that maybe during the retreat would be a good opportunity to. The retreat's another thing. Do we, you know, in the past, we've gone to the retreat to a, a place outside of Montpelier, you know, where we're spending night, and there's food involved. Do we do it in a different way? Do we do it at the day meetings? I don't know, but I think we should be looking at those, as we've had to at the Agency to look at a lot of things, as others have. I think the Board. Unless we're able to get more money in there.
What, this is an, this Board has an $82,000 budget.
Actually, 75. There's a $6,000.
So what percentage would you guess that might be of the Agency budget?
I don't know if it'll show up.
The Secretary's asking us to cut back.
Well, our operating budget for the Department, actually take out the Ed Fund stuff, which takes us over a billion dollars, that's probably around 18 million.
I don't think my calculator could even come up with a percentage.
18 million?
Personal services and operating expenses, all funds, federal.
But that's also, I mean, how much of that goes out to the schools?
No, that's just the personal services.
Personal service, right, okay.
And operating, yeah.
Right, right.
Not flow-through.
Pardon me?
Not flow-through.
No, no, not the grants, not grants, just our staffing and operating expenses and contracts.
And our operating expenses are going up because we're moving to a new location that our rent's higher.
Hey, in that new place, I mean, there's a nice place.
Do they have a conference?
You know what, Sean Marie, that's a.
No, I got distracted because there's a new building, so there might be a new place. Did they, did they put a space in for us?
There is no space for you, we're negotiating space right now, but one, it does make sense, Sean Marie, to have a space, if it's possible, a space that's large enough to have meetings that may not be this large.
The Board has a meeting room as well, because they also have this whole crisis planning team, because they have a new building, and they have two large.
Who does, Angela? I don't.
The Schooler's Trust.
Oh, Visbit.
Visbit.
Oh, yeah, they want to stay in business.
But they'll probably charge us for that.
They'll charge us, we will be looking. But I think, these are all conversations, and I would love, actually, your idea.
That'd be great.
Yes, yes. Whether that's, right now, it's a pretty much an open floor plan, so I don't know if there's.
I wonder if we would look at this in the retreat.
I mean, they've talked about having a conference room large enough for board meetings, so I don't, what we have now is.
That'd be silly if they didn't.
What we call, what we call the cavern, it's, it is a larger meeting room, it's not as large as this room.
No, nowhere near as large as this room. And Sean Marie's right, no windows.
And no windows.
We will, we're more than happy to meet wherever the Agency thinks that we ought to meet. That's not a question. But at the June meeting, we should discuss this generally.
Yes.
And plan on what, how we ought to budget for the coming year.
I think that you'll probably come in real close to being on, I mean, you had that unexpected cost for the added search cost this year that wasn't anticipated when this budget was put together, but it looks like you'll be very close to coming in on target, and we'll be okay for this year, and I think you're, we'll work with you as you look forward.
Well, and I'll mention later, in the searches coming up, how we're going to fully handling that.
Well, that's also an unexpected expenditure. Or unplanned for, I know it was unexpected.
So we should put this on the agenda in June, and, I mean, there's a couple of other issues here that we ought to just talk about in the future, and it's, you know, the timing is natural in that we have a transition going on here.
Yes, and this budget was made before, when this budget was built for this year, we had no idea that the Act 98 was even going to pass at the time.
So if you can find a calculator that can take all those zeros and divide it by 75,000, I'd like to know that percentage at some point.
We'll do that for you.
It's very low.
You got the point, huh?
Well, no, I didn't want to come out and say what we actually do versus the Board, you know, you guys meet once a month for a couple, for a few hours where, you know, so I was best to stay quiet.
I'm moving on to. We'll recess for lunch here in a moment, but let me, as part of my responsibilities as Chair, there's a couple of Board appointments that I'm expected to make, and so it's my pleasure to ask Krista Hurling to serve on the New England Secondary School Council, and ask Sean Marie to serve on the Vermont School Board, no, VSBBE.
Professional Standards.
Professional Standard Board.
Is that what it is?
So if, not hearing any objections.
Can we have a second one with, we?
Well, I think the way to handle that is that, I mean, we're, these are not official positions on the Board.
They're not.
They're, they're just, you know, we've participated jointly, so if there's occasion that you're not able to make a meeting, I think you can simply ask one of us to fill in for you.
Great.
And they're observers, I mean, I think in both situations, they're, you know, that's, and participants, so if you don't miss a meeting, Sean Marie, that's okay.
Before, before Sean Marie makes more of an issue than that, I'm going to recess this, this meeting, and we'll reconvene at.
One.
At one, if not before. Legislature this afternoon, so I'm going to ask him to give his report, and then we're going to go to Agenda Item J, and then we'll go back and pick up the regular agenda. So with that, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, I will be short today. One of the things that we spent, you know. One of the things that we spent, you know, right now, a good part of our time is on legislation, and following bills, working to clarify things, answer questions, and we have folks who are, myself or others, who are at the State House fairly regularly with our either House or Senate Ed. Today, I'm meeting with institutions, somebody else, but, so that is the, a lot of our work right now. And particularly as we reach, we start getting towards the final six weeks, seven weeks, eight weeks, whatever is left of, of the legislative session, we want to make sure that there are, you know, there are several bills. We really want to make sure that, that doing, that the flexible pathways, and we're able to provide as much information and is, and, and information and guidance, if you will, to our, to the House and Senate Ed folks, looking at some of the other things that we're following. But basically, that's, that's one of the big ones. The preschool bill, which is going to be challenging from a financial perspective, but it's a good thing. It will put a, it will put a fairly substantial constraints on our staffing, our ability, so we're, we're looking at, looking internally for, to how to be able to support that, but it doesn't kick in until 2015, so there's some time to readjust what we may, our staffing. But those are, those are two of the, of the, the big ones. Obviously, the, the food and the nutrition piece is in our, in our budget, it's in the governor's budget, so that should be a safe and a huge first step in helping reduce, or a second or third step, depending on what you, how you look at it, in children going to school hungry. At the same time, working with folks, you know, still trying to get some guidance, was on a conference call the other day with the folks from U.S. Department of Education about what does the, some of the upcoming cuts mean to us? The president's budget, which has some, has, whether that gets accepted or not is another story, but at least the budget that he proposed takes some of the sequestration money and, and targets at the places that maybe were not as random as a sequestration came in. We already know that around Title I, Title II, and other areas, there will be some reductions. IDEA will have some reductions. So those are all things that we're trying to work on and provide more and better guidance to the field. Problem is, we're still waiting for more and better guidance from, from the feds, particularly with the president's budget that came out, which is a, has a different focus. Other than that, we just continue to work away and visit, you know, try to visit a school or two every week, and one of the things that, if the Secretary of Education go in and can do a lesson in a class, even with my schedule, principals, I think it's, we were talking before, tomorrow will be at Milton High School doing, doing something in a Spanish class, and I try to do that fairly regularly with schools to keep me engaged with what's happening in schools, even though I was in education for thirty-two years in the schools. It's important for me to be able to go back and, and have that opportunity to meet with kids and schools and see what's happening. So, in general, busy as always, looking forward for the legislative session to end, all in, in the positive, in the, on the positive side, of course, but either way, they're doing some good work that I think will help, help schools and help kids. Doing enrollment, obviously, being a big one, which is part of the flexible pathways.
Questions or comments to the secretary? If not, can we move on then to the Agenda Item J, dealing with the vacancy of the R-N-G's Supervisory Union? We have some paperwork on that.
See anybody here from R-N-G's?
Yes, yes. But I'm going to ask the secretary to give us his recommendation, and I'm thinking that I'll ask him.
And then we have the rules next. As you all see in your green sheet, which is Item J, what we're recommending is that the State Board of Education vote to place the R-N-G Supervisory Union under consideration for supervisory union boundary changes, and permit the supervisory union board to hire a superintendent of the school for two years with an option for a third while the study's being completed. You've seen some of these in the past, some of them you voted in support, and others not to support, and in this case, I feel, I, one of the things that we typically use the opportunity when a superintendent leaves the job in order to look at the redistricting. We have not, even though we, it's in our purview, to be able to just pick a district, even though they have a superintendent, and request this, this study. We have chosen not to do it that way, so that it doesn't become a job issue for somebody who's currently sitting in a position. At the same time, my belief, and the belief of many people, is that we have a educational governance system that is top-heavy with too many of everything, as I've said in the past, but in this case, I believe that we have too many districts, too many supervisory unions that could work together and join others, and with one central office managing the affairs of a little bit larger supervisory union, and would be a cost-saving. We already have at least one district that we know has done that, and there've been some, I think, $600,000 savings, even though we anticipated higher, because remember, no matter what we say, those are paper savings. Once a district then gets those, how they handle it is different. But this case, it's really not so much about R-N-G's, and I feel bad, on one hand, that I'm doing that, but really is that they have a district right below them, Blue Mountain, which I think has three hundred and fifty students, or around four hundred students, which is a separate supervisory union, and what, and I sent this same letter that I sent to the R-N-G East Board, to also to the Blue Mountain Superintendent, for them to be aware of that. And I know that the Chair of the SU Board is here, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the efforts they've made to reach out. The difference now is that they would have the, if you approved this, they would have the authority of the State Board of Education behind them, so that whether somebody wanted to work with them or not, they would not have a choice. So, in this case, I will leave it up, stop right now, and you saw the background information that's here.
So I have a question, and I don't know who it's to. Has the R-N-G's Board expressed in the past, you know, several years, an interest in doing this as a board? Have they done anything about looking out to do this?
Why don't we, if I may, why don't we, Vaughn, do you want, do you have more information to add?
I think it would be great if the Board Chair were to speak next.
Yeah, let's, Margaret, if that's okay with you, let's, let's listen from Mr. Simpson and...
Thanks for coming, Steve.
You're very welcome.
This is Mr. Steve Simpson, who's the Chair of the...
No, it's not hot, it's not hot.
Chair of the R-N-G Supervisory Union.
So I'm just curious.
Good afternoon.
Why don't we listen, let him make his presentation, then we'll get into questions.
Sure. To answer your question, I'll start off with that. Before the Reds became fashionable, we were exploring what you're talking about there. We'd already reached out to Blue Mountain, we reached out to Rivendell. We were looking at it under the guise of, as students were dwindling and rifts are imminent, why have all these silos of schools in districts? For instance, Blue Mountain have an eighth grade teacher. Enrollment fell, do you riff that teacher and say, you know, it's too bad to be you, you're now a sixth-tenth teacher? Whereas fifteen miles to the south, in Newbury, we could use a fourth-tenth teacher. So, talking both with the unions and both with the people, say, hey, look, you know, let's pick these silos, let's kind of put them by the wayside. We looked at it even going to the point now, purchasing, fuel purchasing, we've been doing, been doing that, huge, huge savings. When you go to a fuel supplier and say, hey, I've got a potential order for a hundred thousand gallons of fuel oil, what can you cut for me, as opposed to buying eight thousand? We've already been doing that. We were doing that before, okay? Then Reds came along, so now we formally invited Blue Mountain and Rivendell to the, to the table, and said, come on, folks, come on over here, let's talk about it. How, we were very similar in a lot of ways, we were very different in a lot of ways. As the Commissioners pointed out, and it's Secretary of Education, I'm sorry, I still...
That's okay, Steve, don't worry about it. We'll take it out on Stevens.
The differences became more and more. Blue Mountain kind of being its own entity, K through twelve, they've got roughly five hundred, five hundred and fifty kids there, they're all in the same building, same campus. Now you take a look at, to the, to the south of it, you look at R-N-G Supervisory Union, we're made up of five districts, plus a, plus a tech school. Doesn't sound like a big, big deal, but when you start looking at it, in among all of that, we have a supervisory union made up of Bradford, Newbury Elementary in Oxbow, within the R-N-G Supervisory Union. You have Waits River, where I'm the Board Chair, where we're a unified district. Totally different animal, different cat than everybody else. We have school choice, and then you go to the south, and we have Thetford. Walk across the lawn in Thetford, you have a Thetford Academy. Now you have, I have a high school right, right across the sidewalk. Totally different layout, we're all the same, but we're different. You may sound like an oxymoron. We've looked at this, same thing, we've been tearing down the silos. We, once again, we invited Blue Mountain in, we invited Rivendell in, folks come to the table. And the more we talk, the more different philosophically wise, education-wise, that we were, because we are. I mean, when you have a tech center, we're pulling from across state lines, we're pulling from all borders. That's within the Oxbow campus, you have a high school, then you have Waits River, who we have school choice, and we send kids everywhere. So now you, I mean, what is the same, I mean, we're in the vein of education, we are trying, and we, that's what we hope to do with the new superintendent, is tear all the silos down, find out the good education, because within our same districts, we have, we have two districts that are under AYP. We have one school that's in its second year, one, one school is in its first year. And if you don't think there's a correlation between free and reduced lunches, just look at my school. Sixty-seven percent free and reduced lunches, and my school is one of those. We're taking the good things, as for like, from Thetford. Thetford is one of the high performers as far as elementary. And the kneecaps, which, sorry, are going away, here goes another benchmark we had, now that's going to common court, but that's a story for a different day. But we're trying to take what works the best of the best and integrate it into our schools. Because every school thinks, the elementary school thinks you're doing a bang-up job until you send them to the secondary, and all of a sudden, oh my God, here come the Waits River kids again, or here come these kids, they're deficient in this. Well, let's turn it back here, long before that happens, let's have the talk, and that's what we're doing. The teachers are having leadership, teachers from Waits River, Bradford. We're doing this already, we, we've been doing it. We would like to be able to continue doing this. So to answer to the secretary's point, well, Blue Mountain, we are the same, now we all have teachers, and we all have, you know, buses that go to the same place. Geographically, just pull a map out, you know, Connecticut River Valley, and then you throw a couple mountains in between there. Within my own towns, I have two towns in my unified district. We now have to take out, we feel it's the best for the children, when they're right close to Blue Mountain, why truck them an hour and a half on a bus? I don't know about you, I mean, I'm in the busing business, but it gets really difficult for a kindergarten to be on a bus over an hour. At what point do you say, wait, enough is enough? For us, we feel that to continue forward going where we are, for us to be able to get the proper superintendent in there, to challenge our building principals. We started a year ago, we had four rookie building principals, four. Two, two kids came out of Alaska, we've got one that was promoted, came out of the special ed system. I mean, these are all rookie ones, and we're, and we feel we're, you know, we're getting, starting to rise to the, to another level. We want that superintendent, and we've already enlisted Bob Stevens, we've already talked to VSBA. We want to be able to sit back, and for us to look culturally and to know where we need to go. And we're taking, we've had, as a board, we've taken our ed team and pulled them in and said, okay, what do we need to do in a superintendent? Because typically, as, you know, when you, when you're running from the board level, you don't say, bring all your, your, the people in the administrative portion, all your principals in, and say, help us find a leader. What do we need in the leader? You know, and it's one key step, I think, that we've, you know, realized that we didn't do that. The president, and I'll give you an example, the president's superintendent, you know, I'm sitting down doing the evaluation with him, and I'm asking him, I mean, I'm, I came out of the business field, so I know you have goals, and you have stretch goals, and you need to challenge your person. Somebody's, their best potential is eighty-five, you push them to eighty-six. Another person, say, his best potential is ninety-five, you push them. So I asked the superintendent, I say, okay, when you sit down with your principals and your, and your ed team, how do you challenge them? And his answer to me, and I just thought on my chair, was, well, I was never a principal. And I said, what? He said, well, I was never a principal. I said, well, I'm not a cook, but I know about food, you know? I'm not a chef, but I know about food. I mean, it just, and then I realized how little I don't know about education, about asking the questions, you know? I'm coming, I came from a business climate, and I can ask the tough questions to go along that, but you're thinking a superintendent coming in, that's their job, but, and, and dealing with the principals, that's their first thing, and, and you don't know how to challenge them, education-wise? I mean, I just...
So I'm just wanting to get a little clarity.
Sure.
You, you said you've been having these conversations.
Mm-hmm.
This letter, is this letter supportive of the ongoing process? I mean, what about Blue Mountain? What about Rivendell? Where, are they in the same place as you?
Um, chat...
Making them do it, going to be a beneficial conversation? Are they wanting to engage in this conversation?
No, no, we've had this conversation, we have continued to engage a conversation with both, with both districts, and what can we do the same? How can we work together? But for us philosophically, for where we're all, like I said, with, R-N-G's is a cat of its own, there's so many different challenges. Blue Mountain, I mean, you talk about pushing students out, you know, secondary, secondary choice, totally different. Dealing with, there again, dealing with the tech center, yes, they send students, but it's a different, it's a different animal. To answer your question, would it be beneficial? No, I think it'd be a waste, a waste of money. I'd rather see the, personally, and I'm speaking for the district, rather see the resources pushed forward to help us get to the next level, to find that superintendent. I know they're out there, I know there's some good ones out there. And there again, I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
Find the person, you know, model ourselves after that quality of that, of that person.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I hope, I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, you have, thank you.
So I'm, I'm not understanding you. Are you in support of this motion, or opposing?
I'm not opposed, I'm opposed to studying anything with Blue Mountain, I think it'll be a waste of time. We've tried to, it's like your kid, you tell them to sit down and eat the green beans, or else, you know, they'll, they will eat it, but they don't want to do it. You know, we've tried to dialogue multiple different ways and kept it going on, on multiple fronts, but to answer your question, they really, you know, I don't bring, forcing them to the table, well, you know, we'll all have to do what we have to do with the recommendations, but I don't think it'll be beneficial.
So I have some think, um, about this. I agree that streamlining supervisory unions and working collaboratively is a good thing. I see it as a big policy issue, um, state-level policy issue, and this letter seems to be chipping away at it by having districts do it, and I think if you don't have Blue Mountain supportive of it, and you don't have Rivendell supportive of it, you're just going through a paper exercise, and I don't see any point in that. I think it would be, the energy would be better spent on state-level policy streamlining, rather than asking local districts and local boards to do this hard work to each other, with each other, when they don't want to play.
Mr. Secretary?
One of the things that we're, we're doing this because we see, and this comes from the governor's office and from legislators, I mean, you're right, it probably should be something that's done at the policy level, I don't see that happening, okay? So if it doesn't happen, I am exercising the authority that the board has to look at, what can we do to reduce, we're not closing districts. This is the piece that, that is, is surprising to me when I was in a, in a school district. Nobody really even thinks twice about a supervisory union, they care about their school district. All we're saying is, can we make the supervisory unions more efficient to run the districts? And in the case, I don't think it's a waste to have Blue Mountain, even though they may not have wanted to, Stephen, I understand that. Voluntarily, the board has the authority, if they see that there are savings, to make Voluntarily, the board has the authority, if they see that there are savings, to make a decision. Savings and better opportunities for kids. Let's not forget that, which really I should lead with that. If it's better for kids, and I do believe it's better for kids, we have a very top-heavy administrative structure in the state of Vermont. We're spending millions of dollars, additional millions of dollars, I believe, that could be used to increase the size of our supervisor union. I know it's not great for superintendents, means more school board meetings. I'm sorry. You know, that's a choice that they make when they go into the profession. Ideally, as I've recommended the past, forty S Ds around the state with forty, forty school districts, forty superintendencies, probably a much more realistic number or more realistic way of approaching this, but that's not happening. So in this case, let's assume that there's a study done. And the district can choose to do the study and if they choose not to, we'll do the study. At the end of the study, a recommendation comes to the board. If the board sees that there is a financial savings, of substantial financial savings and better opportunities for kids, then the board can make that decision whether Blue Mountain or Orange East or whoever likes it or doesn't like it, that's what the board decides. And, and I do believe that'll make it work. None of these decisions are done without some thoughtful thinking. All I hear and have been hearing for years is we need to do something about our structure. When you look at districts that are large, that can operate, they can buy more for their kids because of their size, it does hurt some of the smaller ones. When small districts are having to spend money duplicating services, that's an issue. So this is just, these are all exercises that the board at some point can decide to support it or not. You'll be getting something back in the next few months. One is, one of them that we're, I think that you all got a letter on, which is the Windsor Southwest. Northwest, excuse me. Cut that. Windsor Northwest, um, is one of those. We're looking at Baton Kill, that's another one. We're looking at Washington South. There are districts that are very small and are their own SUs that could benefit all of us. Because, don't forget, we're all in a statewide funding system. We all pay. The more money has to go to administration, the less money goes to schools. And I think ultimately, when I'm looking at this, what's in the best interest of kids? Not what's in the best interest of adults? If it puts adults in an uncomfortable place, I'm sorry, that's not what I'm worried about. I'm worried about how do we improve opportunities for kids? I understand in this case, because, Steve, you guys are ready to go and look for, I was talking to Bob, that you're looking to do an interim for a year, which then makes this three-year, two years plus one difficult because then how do you find somebody to come in for one guaranteed and a second one?
Right.
Maybe. I, I understand all those things. And I don't have an answer for you, other than, then it's a hard place that I've put you in, or the board could potentially put you in. But again, if you, it's up to the board to do it. It's my recommendation. I've been making these tough recommendations for the last four years. Not received with open arms, quite open, quite honestly, from everybody, but it's my responsibility and I'm not here to make friends. I'm here to try to do what I think is in the best interest of a state that has increasing costs and declining enrollments. And how do we protect kids from losing more, uh, programs by looking at our administrative structure as a more efficient matter? But again, that's up to the board, how you, how you decide to do this. And, um, I'll stop.
So, um, just so we're clear, you, you're, you're hoping that we would vote today to give you authority to hire a superintendent?
Right.
No study, just hire a superintendent?
If we could have a study, I mean, and we're not rushing in this to put a warm body in the seat because we need a superintendent.
Right.
You know, we put, I'm going to call it our Plan B in place. We have an administrative team. We've taken, with your blessing, taken our assistant superintendent and going to give her the title of interim superintendent. And she made it very clear she does not want the position. And we've taken one of our building administrators. There again, this team has stepped up. They've come to me and said, look, we can't wait, you know, you know, our kids' education, we just can't wait until somebody makes a decision of which, which direction I want to go. So we've taken a principal that said he will step in the roles of assistant superintendent. And there are other building administrators, they've been doing this stuff behind the scenes right along. It's just, it's a bad situation and will be rectified as of July first. And I'll leave it at that.
So if, just simply state what you would prefer to, what's, what's the motion you would like to see this board pass today?
I would like to see you let us, we can do a study, we, on our own. We're going to take however long it takes to get the correct superintendent. We've been through too many superintendents. You grab what you think is the best one, we're going to take whatever it takes to get us there. But as the Secretary pointed out, you're not giving us a whole lot of thing. It doesn't make it very attractive. If I'm somebody on the West Coast looking to move here, I'm not going to come here for one-year contract. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not. How long, I wish I had the magic ticket, how long is this going to take? Because I'd like to be able to put all the people back in the places they belong. We have an assistant superintendent as our curriculum coordinator and she is doing, you know, common core coming right along. We've got everybody on, in boat, going on this, but we start, starting to stretch the bodies a little thin.
Vaughn?
A couple of points. One, I wanted to alleviate one concern that Ms. McLean had. If the, or were to choose to have the state do the study, it would not cost them anything. We really wouldn't be asking very much from a business manager that we don't collect already. So from that aspect, it, it won't be extra work. The other thing, people assume when we start a study that we've decided something should happen.
Right.
I mean, it's inevitable. Every time we do it, it happens. And no matter how many times you say, we simply want to look and see what we can find, there's, there's still this, some, in, in most cases, it's much more defensive than, I mean, they're doing a fine job. It's, what do you think we're doing wrong? In terms of Blue Mountain, they're not five hundred. They're actually, according to the.
Four thirty-two or something?
Book, four thirty-five. And I understand declining particularly in secondary. I had just some, I was approached by Blue Mountain. I didn't reach out to them when they got the Secretary's letter. And, um, they're a supervisory district. It actually came as a shock to them, to some of them, that you could move the supervisor union, part of them, and not change the district at all. You keep insisting, look, nobody can change your schools. Nobody can change the grades that you operate. That's in your voters' hands. And suddenly you find out that they didn't entirely understand what you were talking about and what they're most afraid of is something that's beyond this, this board's power. So what, if we're in a dead end, we're not lacking things to do. We would stop fairly rapidly and, and come back to the board and say, um, this isn't going to work. I don't know whether in any of the other areas. Rivendell is a very special case.
That's right.
Rivendell's an interstate district and I hate to think of what it would take to merger there.
So, Bill, I actually think it would be fabulous if the department did the study and provided both boards with the information and objectively and outside. I, I just don't see in the letter where that option's clarified.
In the, in the green sheets.
Okay. I was looking at the letter.
There's a box.
There's, there's a place in here, I'm sure Carol can find it.
There's a third option in there.
Decide whether it would prefer to have the State Agency of Education conduct the study or to do it on its own.
So would both the RNG East Board and the Blue Mountain Board or the Rivendell Board have to agree to it or would just the RNG East Board?
Just the RNG East Board, but.
They can invite whoever they want to the table.
Table.
But we could commission a study to study whatever we wanted to, right?
That's right. That's right.
But in, in either case, it's public data and most of it.
Of course. How many people and kids in Rivendell?
Uh, Rivendell.
I recognize your.
Eleven fifty somewhere in there.
Problem in.
Oh, eleven Rivendell, I'm sorry. No, I have it, uh, Rivendell has four, uh, four hundred and ninety pre-K to twelve.
And the high school is in New Hampshire. High school is physically in New Hampshire.
High school is physically in New Hampshire, yes, Bill.
Right.
So that's a little bit more complicated. Rivendell is a little more complicated.
Look at everything.
Sean Marie.
But the interstate school district is a federal, I mean, that law, that's a.
You probably would need the Massachusetts Legislature's involvement and possibly, I don't know.
You see, if I, if I was Blue Mountain.
Wait a minute, hold on a minute. Sean Marie's been recognized.
So I understand what you're saying and I've certainly lived through enough of these, but I think it's really important for the communities to take a look at what the options might be. And so I would actually like to, I mean, this recommended action actually has a third option in it. Do you want the motion with the third option in it or do you want a more straightforward motion?
I think the straightforward motion would be helpful, Sean Marie. The, the three in here are what they could choose to do.
But the motion says that you could hire a superintendent for two years and a third if you needed to.
Yes, and we've given that to everybody. That third year option.
So I would like to make the motion to, for the state board to vote to place the Orange East Supervisor Union under consideration for the supervisor union boundary change and permit the supervisory union board, that would be yours, to hire the superintendent of schools for two years and a third if necessary.
Is there a second to that motion? Krista, you're second in it, okay? Margaret?
Well, I'm, I agree that it's important for the communities to look at it. And so they have to be open to that conversation. And if you were Blue Mountain, you might, it might make more sense to be a part of Caladonia Central. There's, there's a bunch of different options.
We're not asking that to happen.
No, but I, I think for the state to provide the data that shows where cost-saving could be gained, it'd be really useful for supervisor union boards. And I think this feels like it's hub-tying RNG East a little bit. And asking them to play with these other districts that up until this point have not expressed an interest in those conversations.
Uh, I would like to play off that a bit is that.
Bill?
I'm wondering if we could have an independent person do the, the studies. They wouldn't be, you know, the agency wouldn't be, get the blame, neither would the school districts. And that they, as part of their commission, go visit to, with the population and have public meetings in all three places. Uh, Rivendell, Rivendell, uh, Blue Mountain and their supervisory union as well. And I don't mind them hiring a superintendent in the least, but I would like a comprehensive study that they, they would come out with whatever's best and it may be some combination we hadn't even thought of.
I'll wait for.
Mark?
I'm sorry.
Like, a couple of questions, Steve. How many superintendents have you had over the past few years?
Over the past two. We're now on our third, we're getting ready to go to the fourth. This one had just finished up the second year.
Don, who's there for two years, right, Steve?
This will be the end of his second year, correct?
Okay.
So you have a lot of experience in going out for superintendent searches?
Too much.
Too much. And, um, through that experience, have you, have you determined at all why you might have a tough time finding the right candidate or, or why one might not work out once they get there?
Just to give a little bit of history, I've been on the board for five years and chair, chair for the board, now going into my, into my fifth year. Just to kind of give you a flavor of what the SU was like. First year when I voted on it, I was a voting member from Waits River. They would meet maybe five times a year. This is a supervisor union. You're talking twenty-one million dollars, the same, you know, that much bringing to the table. They might meet five times. Now, how on this earth do you have, run, I'm going to call it a business or anything and meet five times? And even then, I've been told that even when I first went on there, you couldn't get, couldn't get a quorum and you couldn't do any business. Still, how do you conduct? That superintendent was asked to leave. Usher away from that. The person ruled with an iron fist, so to speak. Not, it didn't leave anybody the good flavor. Now, when I, when I came on, I said, you've got to meet at least twelve times a year. We need subcommittees. You just can't, you know, board chairs can't decide this on their own. We need to have some structure here. And that's the kind of stuff I put in. It's been an uphill progress. We had an interim that was there when I came on. The interim was more of the stamp of the old regime. I'm the new kid on the block. It takes a while to get, to get through this. Okay, we did another search, thought we were going the right direction, had the right characteristics, ended up with now the one we have, the one will be leaving us in July. So the board makeup for the supervisor union, it's fifteen members on the board, has pretty much changed. There's a few, I'm going to call us a couple of the old guard there that really want, they're there because they want to educate the kids. You know, this business stuff and this other stuff is getting in our way of doing the best thing for our children. You know, us doing a superintendent search, us looking for a business manager. We had a complete turnover of the, of everybody in that supervisor union three years ago. I mean, everybody. I think the secretary was the only one that stayed on. Everybody's gone. We're picking the, picking the pieces up. So now we're at the point, to answer your question, that we have the decent, we have the support staff, we have administrators that are there. They just need that person to take and, take and lead them. And like I said, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. But we also want to be able to take a breath and we want to be able to say, okay, let's find that good, that perfect superintendent. Okay, we've enlisted the help of the VSBA. Bob Stevens is going to help us. We are going to get, we are going to get there. We're a determined group of individuals with a common goal. Much different than in the first years I was there. You can have a dissenting vote, but at the end of the day, we leave and we support. It may be a seven to five vote on something, but all twelve people that, that were there to vote, support it. Much different than before, they couldn't even make a decision to adjourn. People just get up and walk out. I mean, this is just, I mean, I mean, it's something as silly as that, you know? So, I mean, I feel privileged to be able to work now with a group of individuals. I think we have the common goal together. I mean, as diverse as we are, we have the common goal of what is best for our, for education, for our children.
Well, it, it sounds to me like you've done a great job of, you know, bringing people together. And, um, having gone through a superintendent search in our SU, um, I believe the term that we heard was that the waters run shallow for qualified candidates. And, um, and so it, it could be a tough haul. Took us a couple of years. And, um, and, and given a bit of your, the history and some of the dynamics that you have in your communities, I, I wonder if maybe a study wouldn't actually help if, if in the end you stayed exactly the way you are, but it wouldn't help your own SU determine, you know, what your needs are and to help build to the future in of itself.
To your point, we had a study done in two thousand nine by Ray Prue. And I mean, just that. Talked to everybody from the, to everybody, Janet, to community members. I mean, it's, it's tough. As diverse as we are, talking to different people and he put, and he put together a study. And I brought that same study out and gave it to all the new members. I said, you know, folks, take us home. Here's, here's some reading for you. Read it. And then you come back the next meeting and tell me, have we changed since 2009? Philosophically, we are, how Ray's report came out is we're headed there. We just didn't have the right people in, in place to do it. I wish it was a magical thing where you went to the slot machine, put the quarter in and out, spit out that magical person, you know? But there isn't, so...
What did Ray recommend?
I'm sorry?
What did Ray Prue recommend?
Change. Huge amounts of change. Structure which we put in place. Like I said, other than maybe Secretary, I think that person's left too. We have turned over the whole central office. Rather than have the central office looking as always, it's a liability and it's a burden.
But that was within your supervisory union?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Not a multi thing?
Not a multi thing. We tried to do it on our own. And, and we still talk to Blue Mountain and we still talk to Rivendell because I envision, you know, hey, we've got computers and Skype, you know? For instance, Rivendell is low on student count. Okay, but AP courses, you need, we need to challenge our learners. And we have it at Oxbow. Skype, I do that with my daughter and my, and my grandkids. I mean, it's a great thing. You can, you can teach an old dog new tricks too, by the way.
Prue with a question.
I'm gonna recognize Krista first before I take up your motion.
Can I just, Secretary, could you just talk about what the study would include and how long it would take? How long would they have to, to wait really to get this information back and...
Krista, I'll pass that on to Vaughn.
Okay, yeah.
Depends on whether you wanted entirely in-frontal study or whether you would take, Secretary, Dr. Mathis' suggestion for an external one, which getting a contractor takes a little bit longer. But basically, there are two aspects of it. One is the academic side. And sometimes on, on cultural issues, you, you just find that there's not a very, very good fit. Blue Mountain looks, for all the world, because of its size, much more like a district than it does like a supervisory district or supervisory union. So we'd hope that, that some of those would be narrowed and that possibly not very much inside would change academically. And if it did, it would be opportunities for sharing one more area of expanded opportunity. Certainly, Orange East was interested in the conversations with Blue Mountain earlier. I think Blue Mountain may be in a difficult place academically as well as financially as they struggle to keep giving their students what they've been giving them. So part of, of the painfulness of the process, and you, you hit it exactly right, and we have made suggestions, and you know what the budget time should like, but to do it more systemically, is districts, one at a time, hit that excruciating point where it's really hurting their students. And if you don't get a critical mass inside an SU, before the critical mass gets there, students in some of the districts have been, have really hurt. I suspect they may be a bit more willing to, to talk now. If we were doing it internally, we basically would get together with principals about the academic side of that along, and everything would go through the SD Board...
Talk about the template, talk about the template that we're using that I think maybe would also lead to the...
The template asks a series of questions, basically about academics and then about costs. And then what we would do is we would pull up all of, the federal grants are a bit tricky. And it sounds as though you could just add them up and redistribute them. But because of poverty being, poverty being the best case, but there are different measures in different districts, it literally involves even an external contractor, and we've, we've used them with very, very good results, would go to the program people and give the scenario. And the program people would have to recalculate the distribution of federal money and what would happen to it in the new circumstances. And so you basically would say, okay, we, we need some standard. We'll have best practices. And best practices may suggest that adding one district to Orange East, particularly one that already has a part-time superintendent. And I don't want to focus entirely on Blue Mountain because it's not the only thing under consideration at all, but that seems to be where it is. You might say, that is strictly, we don't need another person, and they're not even an associate. And you could strike that up as, as savings. And you could go down and you could go into payroll and various other areas. And you can add it up and you can see where potential savings are. It's easier, maybe it's because I'm in finance, but for me, it's easier to see it on the financial side. You know, there are nice numbers and you can add it up. And it, one thing I want to clarify, the secretary said, we found the savings in the case of Two Rivers and the mountain towns red. They chose to spend some of those savings on other educational opportunities rather than pass them back to the taxpayers. So the full total savings that were found in the study by an external person who came in were very, very real. And they...
Vaughn, thank you.
Sure, sorry.
Mr. Mathis has moved to, to move the issue. Is there a second?
Second.
This motion has been made and seconded to move the issue. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
No, one, two?
Two noes.
Okay, so I, the motion has passed. So the motion before you is that the State Board of Education vote to place the Orange East Supervisory Union under consideration for supervisory union boundary changes and permit the supervisory union board to hire a superintendent of schools for two years with an option for a third while the study is, is completed. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
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 One, two, three, four, five, six to two, and the motion passes. Okay? Thank you, Mrs. Simpson.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, Mr. Mathis, we're on to the legislative committee update.
Okay, I'd like to...
Oh, before we move on, you know, we've had a number of these before us, these motions like we just acted on. I think it would be very handy if we got a monthly sheet of an update of where we are with all those various things.
Yeah, and we have, we actually have one. We could send you electronically.
There's a template.
We, Carol's got one in her hand right now.
It's actually on my list.
Ah, okay. You know, I've been around long enough and Carol knows what my thought is before I have the thought.
And this is the second, I mean, you passed just in December, I think it was, Winuski, also looking at Winuski doing a study. Particularly now as they're working with Burlington on, on, on the Nellie Mae Foundation Grant. It's a great opportunity for them to look at. And again, whether the result comes out being a new supervisory union or not, or at least a different relationship, is what I think we're looking for.
Carol, Stephen didn't vote. So it's five to two.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's a good clarification.
Oh, because Vaughn, he's not here. Bill, legislative update.
Okay, I'd like to invite Jill to come up to, since she's the person who's front and center on most of these issues and across the street all the time. There are four bills that I've picked out that are key on air priorities that I think are biggies and we can talk about more if we like. But the first of these is a miscellaneous education bill, which was a bill that we thought was not really a problem and we could just go right ahead and tell the chairman of the House Education Committee in section 16 through 18, which outlawed privatization of schools, privatization of public schools. Now, those people who are new to the board will not remember our wonderful time we had with North Bennington, which took the best part of a year in terms of their privatization. It was the opinion of most of the board members that this was a misuse of the existing law. And in fact, that's our legislative position, is that the legislature go back and look at this because that was not the intent. Well, the amendment was to eliminate privatization of public schools, but things started getting unusual in the House Education Committee all last week and, and in the space of three days. And I don't even know where it is and I'll rely on Jill to help me with this one, is that first there was a moratorium that was going to be established on any privatization. And then a stu, while a study committee, which was a stack committee in the sense that it had five private school advocate people and five public school, plus the secretary and the state board representative, or the chair of the state board, look at things. This then was, even after the amendment to eliminate privatization was put in, then they went around, turned around and backed it out. And this was the chair of the committee's bill that was all of a sudden being pulled on an eight to two vote. And then, in no time flat, it went through a third reading on Friday. And so it's now off to the Senate. And at this point, the question is, is what position do you want the state board to take on that? Stephen and I have both been active in visiting with the legislature. Our position basically says that at this point, they're written and approved, the position is that this is a misuse of the law and the legislature should study and correct this misinterpretation. That said, that's not exactly what's happening now, is that there, effectively, there's nothing in the bill, correct?
There's a committee.
There's the committee.
The study over the summer, led by me.
Is there a moratorium on...
No.
Nope.
They took that out too?
No, that got taken, taken out.
It's just a committee.
Moratorium got taken out and the secretary as the head of the committee was taken out too.
No, I think the secretary's still the leading, I don't know what you call it, but...
Chair, chair, it says chair.
Does it say chair? Okay.
I had heard yesterday that it got taken out, but this thing is happening as we speak. My own thought about the matter is that we should talk with the Senate Committee and actually go back to our original position that we did in North Bennington is, is to make a more clear statement that the privatization of public school and taking the governance, this event privatizes a school, gets rid of the local school boards, what this amounts to, and turns it over to a corporate agent. The school, local school board would then pay the tuition to the private school at the tuition rate that they would want to charge. So that's the summary of where we are. And I'd like to hear your opinions, your thoughts, your questions. And Jill, if you wanted to add anything, have I left, have I hit the key points?
Let me just add, particularly for the new board members, who I don't think most of you were here when we went through a process and adopted our legislative priority for the, for the session. We had a section six on governance. Section 6C says, avoid incentivizing the formation of new schools or privatization of public schools. In a time when student enrollment is decreasing and some claim that some schools are too small to be cost-effective, further fragmentation is counterproductive. So that was an adopted priority by a board that not all, that you now sit on, but you not all necessarily were here when that was done. And you're certainly free to think differently, but we would hope you wouldn't.
My, Stephen?
Yes, Sean Marie.
Is it in how, is it in Senate Ed? Is that where it went to?
Yep, Thursday afternoon, they plan to take it up.
They, it's still, it hasn't...
Hasn't been formally assigned to them, but they're planning on talking about it.
The reason I ask is that Don Collins sat in that very seat through all of this and he is now on there. So I think certainly, certainly his perspective on what happened over that year and the, the pieces we weren't able to control and the, the actual statute, he will be very well aware of. So I think that that's a plus. But I think if we wanted to reiterate our concerns, that that would be good too.
I think it would be. In the sense is that if any one of us are walking into the Senate Ed Committee or any legislative body on this issue, it'd be good to have, say that we're speaking for the board.
Okay, yes?
Just, you know, being that I'm, I'm in a, in a little bit of both place, I'm on the board, even though I'm not a voting member. Our position, my position and the agency's position is that a study is a good thing. It is a huge public policy question. And I think one of the things that became confusing during the House Ed Committee was it became an independent school study, and it really is not. I remember talking to Mill Moore and some of the folks from the independent schools. They were, why should this be an independent school study when it's a very narrow question about should a public school be closed and independent school be open in its place? Even though we're all, you know, the statewide property tax and all those things, all, all make us one district. I do believe without a moratorium date on, on, in the bill, that a study with a recommendation, I think it's by December 15th of this coming year, that then they could act on it next year. I don't think a moratorium on districts doing anything right now would make a difference because it would take a vote at a meeting, which is after the report would be due. So I don't see anything happening between now and the report comes out. So I would, what I am advocating as a Secretary of Education, when I go to the, to the secretary, to the House or Senate Ed, is that a study's a good thing and keep the more, keep the date out. That doesn't mean that my position and the board's position have to be consistent. I'm just letting you know, so there's no confusion, what my position is when I go and have gone to the, I guess it was House Ed, and I'll be going to Senate at some point.
I think you characterize it correctly. A study is a good thing, but like you said, and that's a nice way of phrasing it, it became an independent school commission rather than the narrow issue of using the law in this fashion.
That's right.
And I think we'd be, all be in agreement on that point.
I don't know what it says right now, however, the exact wording about is it, what the question is in the current bill.
Well, I understand your, I mean, I, everything you've said I agree with except. I think that today is April, which is the fourth month of the year, and December is eight months from now. And while you say not much can happen, with the pressure of that window there, things will happen. And so I actually support the idea of a moratorium because while we can't be sure of all that's been going on because it hasn't come forward, applications haven't been submitted, there's a lot going on around the state with regard to what happened in North Bennington. And if, if there are a number of applications submitted between now and December, they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna...
Grandfathered.
They're gonna be grandfathered into the situation. So I agree with you that it's unlikely, but I would still feel more comfortable if the, I certainly recommend a study so it isn't taken as that it's anti-independent school. But I would also add that I feel that strongly, that I would like to see a moratorium until the study is out and the legislatures convene in January, which is the same body of legislators. So it's not like it's a whole new number of people.
Vote to, or does a board needs to vote, a board has to take a vote that they want to study the independent, change the school from a public school to an independent school?
Thirty days' notice.
The only option the school district has, has nothing to do with independent school. They can opt, they can opt to close their school or not. That's all they can do.
And that has to be voted by the community?
Yes.
The Board of Education first has to make that recommendation.
Yeah, they could put it on, they could call for a special meeting or put it on the annual meeting.
Or a petition, right. And they could have a meeting prior to the annual meeting if they...
With thirty days' notice.
Do a special meeting or they can do it at the annual meeting, put in a...
Which is next March. So I think that's the piece that Sean Marie clarified, that it could occur prior to the next annual meeting.
Yeah, the question's been muddled. The only thing the public school board can do is opt to close its school. And if, if the community does close the school, then they have to still provide education. They would do so by paying tuition.
And a question that we're also looking at, we, we don't have to, we're not looking at it, but I think it was raised at the House, is the whole constitutional question, which we don't have, that's not our place because that's not our expertise.
The question is, can a public school pay tuition to an independent school that excludes students? And it would exclude students because it may not be approved to provide certain disability categories of special education.
And that's not a question that we answer, that'd be a question...
No, no, the answer to that, and that's a, yeah, that's a court question.
Right. Or at least from the Attorney General's office.
They could start, they could start the ball rolling.
You know, it's, it's interesting to me. I mean, it was pretty clear to all of us, I think there's agreement on this, that the, the current statute was obviously written years ago for independent schools that were incidental to the, to the private, public school in the, in the area. And the only method that the North Bennington had to close their school and become a private school was that same section. So what we pointed out to the legislature very early on, hey, we're not making a judgment on whether this should happen or not, but the statute needs amending if, if you want to do that. So now to come up with a, I'm speaking personally, not for the board here, to come up with a extended summer study committee, instead of making the public policy issue, just doesn't make any sense from a public policy point of view. It's irresponsible. So it's hard for me, Mr. Secretary, to go in and, and support that. You know, if, if we have, if you have a feeling in one way or another of how, where you think you ought to come down on this, that's, that's, that's the legislation that ought to be sought. Initially, the House Ed Committee said, nope, you know, this is, this is not permissible under the law. And that got taken back and now there's, you know, they're going back and forth.
Just to make sure you understand fully, you probably do, that you are one of the members assigned to this summer study committee.
I, I do.
Personally.
And, and just so you know...
The chair of the state board.
It was not a position that I sought. And it does say, or designate.
Yes, it does.
So be careful, be careful.
Can we get some kind of motion or consensus so that we would have a clearer sense of direction here?
Well, let me, let me, let me keep it simple. Are people comfortable with what Bill was saying at the beginning, that it continues to be our position as it, as it was in the legislative priorities? And Bill is chair of the, of the State Board Legislative Committee, will, will work with the Senate Education Committee and see if he can help resolve this issue. Are we comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah, and I would push for the moratorium. I agree with Sean Marie on this one.
Well, instead of, instead of harnessing you with, with restrictions, I'm, I'm trying to say that you, you, you go and work with them on, on this big issue.
I'm just reiterating and, and just to get it on... I'm just reiterating and, and just to get it on the record. And, okay, I'll proceed accordingly.
Are there other legislative items that you want to bring up?
Yeah, three.
Okay. That's, we're, we're really running into time, so let's.
Well, I know. Pre-K, our first priority, Armando talked about this some, a little bit earlier, and it's a bill that we support. I think it's gonna run into trouble on two points. One is money. People are really concerned about money under the Gold Dome. And the second thing is this free and open for school choice thing, which is a flashpoint for a number of members of the House. And everybody supports the concept, but the, the money and the choice philosophical argument are there and will have some effect on what happens with the bill. I don't know that there's any reason to take any action on this or discuss it any unless you want to discuss it. Flexible pathways, S-130 is the third. Stephen and I both talked with the House Ed. I managed to do, groom him into that particular place. And it's not our priority per se, but it's very compatible with EQS kind of thing. So, supporting this bill is not hard to do. A couple of things, and part of the discussion we were having this morning, this bill has much greater implications than people realize. I think it's a very important and a very good bill. When you move from proficiency, from test base to proficiency base, you change your accountability system. And I don't know how the federal thing is gonna play out, but that's huge changes there. Moving off of credits to proficiencies is big within itself. Teacher qualities and what is expected of teachers and licensing and certification will have to change. The definition of school year to extended school year, extended school day, different kinds of definitions of campuses will have to emerge. And tracking will have to be virtually eliminated, at least as we know, the traditional high school tracking. I don't think anybody really paid much attention to that. They were thinking of two, two college courses and tech schools and so forth. But I think it's potentially one of the most significant educational policy actions that could happen, and we should not underestimate it. And I think it's something we should spend some time on, and this is part of the retreat items, and when we were talking about the accountability system before, and the disjoint on EQS are within EQS, this comes right dead center into those issues. So, fourth thing, and this is something where it would be good to get the board's guidance, is H-538, which Brad James sent out a summary of. He's been working with the Ways and Means Committee on this one, and Jill forwarded it to us all yesterday. Take a look at that. Wow.
Yeah.
That is some bill. And I will give you my summary on the thing, which is, can be done very quickly, is it ties a whole bunch of regressive tax measures onto cost shifts to local districts where the greatest financial burden will fall on our smallest towns. It's not a bill I can see us supporting. I don't know that it will get out of the House, to tell you the truth. It's gonna have tough sledding, but in terms of policy directions, this is one that I'm not too impressed with.
Sean Marie.
So, but my understanding in terms of just that one specific part about the small schools grant, some committee or other formed, was it two years ago, Armando? And the recommendation?
Two, yes.
They, they actually, the agency, the department then, now agency, recommended, you know, not for the schools that had a mountain between them and that they should be rolling them back. So, isn't, isn't this, well, it's sort of been.
They use some of this language that deemed by geographic necessity, so there's a.
But I mean, that's something that was actually already recommended, so, I mean, is, are you saying you, you throw the whole bill out with the bathwater, or?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that there's, there's 12 items to this, and each of the 12 items in the bill has somebody that will hate it.
Well, I personally, and I'll probably never run for office, is that I support lowering the income sensitivity, which is in here, too. I mean, it makes people more aware of what they're spending. I mean, we have all of these safeguards, so people don't see the actual cost for education. And yes, I'm pretty liberal-minded, Bill, but I think people need to see what they're, what they're paying for. And all these caveats and all these little loopholes let people like me pay the full tax rate.
Yeah, and, and I know that you can tell the difference between Morris Giuliani and Act 60.
Yes.
State aid formulas are by their nature complex.
Yes.
Well, you know, that was an interesting thing. When I, when I appeared in the House Ed Committee, I don't remember what bill, but we had a general conversation. And, and through the conversation, at one point, I said, well, you know, in the old days, when I was in Montpelier, there was a new proposed state aid formula every year. And this, and Act 68 has survived for a long time and doesn't seem to have had any real review.
It's the.
And I, and I, so I made this statement, I said, maybe a lot of these things, like we're seeing here, is just a symptom. And pointing out that, you know, that the formula with, with a reduced enrollment needs, you know, and I'm not suggesting that we do away with a lot of the achievements of Act 68, but the actual formula needs some review. And I was surprised, the number of heads in House Ed that were nodding and saying, yeah.
And they just paid Larry Pykus a ton of money to go review it and take a look at it, and.
Said it was okay.
Says it's working.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Even though it's complex.
So, I mean, I don't, I'm not smart enough to, to suggest how the changes should be made, but I, I agree. I think these are dealing just with symptoms, not with, not with the whole situation.
My interpretation is that it's a reaction to try to do something about what they perceive as being education costs going out of control, or whatever euphemisms you want to use. What do you think the motivation is?
Since 2009 through this year, the piece that drives the, the Ed Fund, the tax rate, what we call education spending, grew 4% over the entire period. From this year to next year, it's going over 5%, and that's what they're reacting to.
And I also think that this is something that we're, obviously, this just came out, it's through the Tax Department. It seems sort of late in the session. There's some huge issues here. So, our position right now is to wait and see what happens. This may be more of a precursor of, of issues that they're gonna address next year.
Next year.
So, right now, we've sort of sat back and said, let's wait and see what happens. The agency itself, or back when we were, the department had recommended some of these things.
And this is in addition to some other proposed tax increases. Rooms and meals, income tax, gas tax. So, I mean, it's, I, I think that would indicate to me that, yeah, this may be just setting the stage for, for next year. Anything else?
Done.
Okay. Finally, all of you for the special ed have been here for two hours. I'm sorry that we've kept you waiting, but we're more than eager to listen to you. So, let's go to agenda and item, item number I.
Will all four of you come up? Oh, good. You need an extra microphone? You can have mine.
I'm counting three.
You can take mine, because I won't have a lot to add here.
I'll bring it up.
Why don't you just start by introductions and, and tell us what you'd like to do on this, this piece of, of work that you've been working on for a long time?
Well, we are, are three of a multi-group organization that has worked on these rules. I'm Alice Farrell. I'm the State Director of Special Education, and with me is.
Kate Rogers. I'm the Early Childhood Special Education Consultant for the Agency of Education.
And?
And I'm Teri Edgerton. I'm the Part C Coordinator of the Department for Children and Families.
We began this process in August of 2012 in order to clarify and coordinate, in particular, our early childhood rules with the legislation that had taken place at the federal level. So, that was our biggest focus, and in doing so, we also had some other issues that came into the school age rules, so that we made some technical corrections and added some language there that was needed. On your comment sheet here, we actually picked out five high points that we'd just like to discuss with you because the rest are pretty much self-explanatory. On page one, number four, which is, this is feedback from our public comment period and from our in-house folks who read the rules with us, and from the public hearings that we had in Burlington and Rutland. So, the, the questions that came up were the readability of the current rules, and some of the questions that were there was that the federal citations were embedded in the text, the definitions were all in a great lump that required flipping and turning, and there were some just technical corrections along the line of changing from agency, the word agency, changing to secretary, along those lines. So, we went through that, took those, that information, and we broke up the Part B and the Part C, the early childhood and the school age definitions, so that they are sectioned off in the immediate space that is dedicated to that. And we took out the federal citations within the text, only putting them at the heads of the paragraphs. And just in general, organize the numbering, organize the language to make it easier to read. The next item that we were concerned with was, is number five on page two of 13, and Teri's gonna speak to that.
I want to give you a little background on why we proposed screening in the Part C rules. Screening is an option per the federal regs that we can, as a state, choose to do. And based on trend data over several years, we looked at the fact that 40 to 45% of children referred to Part C for a full evaluation were not eligible for Part C. We had many comments. The majority were positive. Part of that is due to the fact that there are procedural safeguards in screening in the federal regs, that a family can request a full evaluation at any time. The concerns were pretty much one theme, which was, were we adding another layer for families to navigate? Part of this process also brought to our attention that there are other screening efforts going on in the state, and we are in the process of working with the Vermont Department of Health to work with doctors' offices and pediatricians to link up with screenings currently undergoing, underway in their offices at while child visits, as a means to further collaborate with the system of early childcare and child services in the state, and to build some efficiencies in there and identifying children sooner through the doctor's offices. And part of this process also will be, we will be revising the screening tools and evaluation tools.
Kate is going to speak to number 56, which is on page four of 13.
The Office of Special Education Programs has, has asked states to clarify the definition for potentially eligible. And that means how children are potentially eligible who have been receiving Part C service if they're birth, up to three years of age, and may be potentially eligible for Part B services at age three. So, we have defined that now. We have defined potentially eligible as a child must demonstrate a 25% delay in one or more of the five developmental domain areas, and in, in order to be potentially eligible for Part B services at age three. Another clarification that OSEP required was that for potentially eligible, that Part C programs notify the, the state agencies as well as the LEAs of children who may be potentially eligible to receive services at, at age three.
The last two are mine, number 12 on page six of 13, which talks about, I'm sorry, number 14 on page six of 13, which talks about print disability. And the way we originally had our changes laid out, it gave the, the appearance that print disability was going to replace visually impaired in the identification classifications. It is not, it's a definition of a need that a student may have, and it relates directly to the related service of assistive technology. So, we moved it out of the area where it would give that impression of being an additional identifier, and put it in the definitions, along with expanding our definition of assistive technology and what that entails for students and schools. And the last is number 10 on page seven of 13. The original thought, after getting some feedback from practitioners in the field, was it might be necessary to change the 60 calendar days for doing an evaluation of a student referred to special education to 45 school days. And in the course of collecting feedback on this particular issue, we found that we were close, but there was another piece to it. And the closeness was not in the 60 to 45-day change in the evaluation period, but a change in the necessary response time from when a parent requests an evaluation to when that evaluation is confirmed or denied. And in getting the feedback from the, the public and from the school people, we dropped the idea of 45 school days, to leave it at 60 calendar days, but added into it a 15 calendar day response time from the school to the parent who requests the evaluation. And in that response, they can say, yes, they're going to move ahead and do the evaluation, they're going to convene an evaluation planning team, or they are going to provide written notice to the parent why the student should not be considered for an evaluation. And that really opened up the field of not having a delay in an evaluation because there was no time limit on that, the answer to the request. The 60-day school, 60 calendar day for the evaluation could have gone on forever because there was no response to parents. So, now we have put that in and just made the, the whole procedure far more clear to both parents and school districts.
Sean Marie has a question.
Sure. I'm a little concerned about that two-week window to get back to parents. If the answer is no, it will be, you know, I would imagine it's involved. I know that in our, in many of our school districts, the special ed teams and departments are very, very busy, and the diagnosis of many children coming in is pretty high. At least, I'm, I think, I know in the districts that I'm familiar with, and I think statewide, our numbers have gone up. So, I, I just wonder if really giving the professionals, you know, two weeks to respond in detail, I mean, a yes is very simple. Yes, we'll be doing it within the next 60 days or whatever, but I, I fear that if the answer is no, you've really boxed yourself in.
Well, the, the, once that form is filed, that there's, there's been a review, and there has to be substantiating reasons as to why an answer is no, that a child does not qualify, or the school does not see that a child qualifies for a, an evaluation, there is continued conversation about what other services could be available through the multi-tiered systems of support, through other opportunities that would provide services to a child who might be struggling but not eligible for special education services. So, the conversation doesn't end with the answer, a negative answer. The conversation really continues as to what the school can continue to do to provide services for that student.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Stacy?
I have a question about the collaboration with the physicians. Just knowing, having worked for years in early childhood classrooms, I've had physician, early child, or pediatricians can be all over the map in terms of what they see, especially when they're seeing children in a very different environment than a teacher would be in a classroom. So, is there any, what, support or guidelines or things for physicians, if they're part of the gateway for making those recommendations for evaluations, or?
There's a national effort called Building Bright Futures, not to be confused with Vermont's Building Bright Futures, that is requiring, it's not mandating, but they're asking physicians to screen children at certain intervals. to screen children at certain intervals. And there's a reimbursement rate for that, and the developmental pediatricians at the Child Development Clinic and the Vermont Association for Pediatrics are also involved in this. And this has been rolling out the last two years. And Brina Holmes, who is the MCH, the maternal-child health coordinator at the Department of Health, and I've had several conversations, and she's excited about linking up those screening efforts with early intervention to identify children earlier and get them into services earlier. And they're using the same screening tool that we will be recommending to be used.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. What am I making a motion to do?
You're moving to vote to approve the proposed revisions in special education rules to 2360 through 2368.
That's what I said.
Yes. Is there a second to Sean Marie's well-stated motion?
Sure, I'll second.
Bill has seconded. Other discussion? Are there other members of the audience that are here to speak on this issue? Not seeing anyone?
I have a general question.
Okay.
I really appreciate all the effort, and especially this particular chart at the end. This was really, really helpful. I know when I came, when this came before this board, and I don't remember what meeting it was, but I was sitting over there, I had a lot of concerns from a couple special ed attorneys and special ed educators. And while I can't see their exact comments in there, I'm assuming that they weighed in on the time, because a lot of these seem familiar to what I had. So I appreciate the open communication and taking this in.
And we also did our best to have it in readable, understandable English.
Yes.
I saw that.
Yes, we noticed that. Any other comments or questions?
One thing, just to clarify, this will begin the initiation of the.
It does. The eight-month process starts today.
No, 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 the eight-month process is over.
We are at the end of the.
LCAR.
LCAR is next.
Which is a two or three-week process, is that right?
Does it come back to us, or?
Yes.
Does it come back to you? No, I think you approve it today, and then it goes to LCAR.
If it is approved, it goes to LCAR.
If there's substantial.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and the motion is passed. Go ahead, now you can talk all you want.
If there's substantial, if there's substantial changes that occur as a result of LCAR, we would bring it back.
Thank you very much. I mean, you know, that we did it so quickly doesn't mean that we don't appreciate all your efforts, and we certainly do. Thank you.
And I would just like you to know that there were lots of other hands on this, and from the department and from outside the department as well, and we appreciated all of that input.
Wow, terrific.
And any agency.
A job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
So moved.
And I believe, is there a second to the? As you all know, the, last year, the legislature changed the way this department agency is run. The State Board of Education, under Act 98, was left with the charge of supplying the governor with three qualified names for secretary. We all know that Armando has agreed to serve as, and distinguish himself as the first secretary of the Agency of Education through into January, which means that we are going to have to start the process again and look for the three names that we can propose to the governor. So, I would, as we know from the past, this is a long experience. We've had some conversations with the agency, with the governor's office, and we think that we ought to at least initiate this process at this month's meeting. Generally speaking, the, you know, in a few moments, I will announce the four people that are going to serve on the search committee. We obviously have the procedure that we used the last time around. I purposely have not made any suggestions of that. I know that there's been some conversations between the governor's office and the agency about how that system might be approved, improved. But I think, once the committee meets, that we can work through that process and design a, the way that we want to proceed this search, having learned from the way it worked or didn't work last time around.
Worked really well.
It did. So I'm not, you know, I'm not going to give you today exactly how this is going to work, because I think the committee ought to weigh in on that. We'll certainly keep the full board informed. At some point, we may want to include other outside educational partners, as we did at the last time. I think one thing we'll probably do this time is work more closely with the governor's office and as we go through this process. But the hope is that we will get going on this process sometime in May with the committee, with the hope of being able to supply the governor with the three qualified names sometime in the early fall. So I hope that doesn't seem vague to you at that point, but I purposely haven't structured it completely out, because I think that the other three members of the committee ought to weigh in, as well as the other board members, once we get to go. So, I'd like to appoint Bonnie Johnson-Atton, Bill Mathis, Stacy Weinberger, and myself, and I would serve once again as the Chair of the Search Committee. And I would assume that's acceptable by the board, but certainly the board members are free to speak up if they object to that. Hearing no objection, that will be the Search Committee, and off we'll go. So, by the time we meet in May, the Search Committee will probably have met, and we'll give you an update of where we are, and we'll stay in touch as we go through the process. Generally speaking, you heard a comment earlier that our advertising dollars are very limited, but I think we can effectively use some educational sites that we can post nationally to attract candidates, as well as some limited advertising in Vermont. But again, that's going to be for the Search Committee to figure out. Sean Marie.
I think the governor's budget could weigh in on that. Maybe Ally could ask if they could weigh in on the advertising.
A member of the administration has suggested that they could perhaps find some money. Any questions or comments on that?
Probably need to get together at the end of this meeting to set.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that we'll have a brief meeting after we adjourn here. Any other business come before this meeting? If not, we'll take a, we'll adjourn, entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll take a few minutes, and then we'll sit down and go over, as we usually do informally for the agenda for future meetings. But can we take a three-minute break?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mark has made the motion, seconded the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we are adjourned until May.